Good evening, welcome to the Grozeal Township Board Business Meeting, February tenth. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Anybody have anything? With none, then ask for motion to prove the agenda as presented. Twenty second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, thank you. We do have a presentation tonight. Chief Carmack for the Police Department, would you like to come up? He's going to give us a review from two thousand twenty-four. Good evening, Doug.
Hello, thanks for letting me do this.
Thank you.
As we go on through my presentation, if you have any questions, just add, wait till.
A little bit? You're so tall. Little button on the right.
Toggle switch.
Just so the people can hear you, that's all. Wow.
We will not be fixing that with our budget.
Okay. Go see if we can get some oil, Brian.
Not in the budget.
It's not on our budget. Thank you for letting me do this. What this is gonna be is about two thousand twenty-four review and then two thousand twenty-five projections and some things that we're working on for this calendar year, alright? So first, we'll go over some statistics. So in two thousand twenty-four, phone calls, we received ten thousand six hundred fifty-one phone calls and that was captured in our Equiture system, which is a, records all of our incoming phone calls through our major phone lines in, and the nine-one system. Of those phone calls, our officers were sent to six hundred and eighty-six medical emergencies and a hundred and ten fire calls. Typically, we're the first on scene and then when the fire shows up, they are more specialized in those two different categories and they take over. Calls for service went down for two thousand twenty-four. Report, some of the reports written, I'm just gonna kind of breeze through some stats here. Gone down slightly. Verbal warnings on traffic stops had gone down by lower fifty. Traffic stops, traffic citations, tickets written by officers had gone up. NTAs, which is a different way to write a ticket, went up considerably, three hundred ninety-two. Accidents went down slightly and our OWIs went downtown. These aren't all the stats, I'm just trying to kind of hit the major categories, if I may. And you go into the two different arrest categories in the bottom there, you'll see that arrests went by about a third, from forty-three to sixty-four for the, for the year.
Doug?
Yep.
I don't mean to jump in, just so we understand, I want to make sure the people at home. If they don't know what the NTAs are, although it says notice to appear, it's not a criminal.
Want me to explain it?
Pardon me?
Want me to explain it?
Please.
Well, go ahead then.
Yep. So, the citations is what we always, we all know, speeding ticket, stop sign, car accident, whatever the situation, that's your state ticket citation. Notice to appear is a way that our department, our city, it's only for Grozeal that has these, is a way to give the driver of a vehicle notice that they need to make these corrections without having to go into court. For example, if your headlights out, if you don't have your registration on, you don't have your proof of insurance, or any type of documentation that can be waived at court. It saves the township money by doing it this way, because every time, people believe that ticket is a, tickets are big moneymakers for departments, we write so few tickets for the township of Grozeal, though it's not a profit-making thing for us. This actually saves us money in not having to process normal citations through the courts by giving residents this option.
And never on your driving.
It's not on your driving record either. I'm sorry, what?
It's, it's very nice for them too, it saves them a lot of time as well, because they're coming to the department, it's quick and easy on the island.
It's a kind of a way to let residents know, hey, just, let's try, let's try to get our, our materials together for the next situation, so.
Do they still pay a fine on those, or no? Okay, and why did it increase so much? Any idea?
I, some, stats every year, like, let's say OWIs were the exact same number from last year, but they went down over half in twenty-two. You, you, it's hard to say, like, we can't, people don't call ahead and say, I'm gonna go drunk driving, we don't know, I'm gonna speed in three, in three minutes. It's just, officers are out there, we only have typically two, sometimes three patrolling at a time on this large island.
I just wondered if it was you had additional one patrolling, or?
Uh, I can't give you an answer why.
Thank you, I just want to make sure the people understood there's, what's to that?
Alright, so, I'm gonna kind of go through different parts of the department as we go here, so our reserve unit consists of eight volunteers, men and women, who worked one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine hours for the community in two thousand twenty-four. This unit is run by Sergeant Vasquez on midnights. This, we have a really good group of reserves, they, they get nothing. They get nothing for doing this, it's strictly volunteer. The only thing they do receive is a fifty thousand dollar life insurance policy that they can only collect when they pass away, so hopefully they don't have to ever collect it, that's for their line of duty. But these guys put in for everything from Island Fest to, we, the schools will send us requests, the reserves go, whatever the schools get, they get, for the basketball games, or whatever football games, whatever, a couple wrestling tournaments have requested them, and then for island events, and they also drive around the island. Now, patrolling, it's just an extra set of eyes and ears for the community that are handled with, by the patrolmen, patrol officers. Below that is the Animal Control slash Ordnance Officer, so these stats, right, the top ones, let me start over, the Animal Control ones came from us and then the Ordnance Officer stats came from the Community Development. She had six hundred and three animal calls for service last year involving a hundred thirteen cats, a hundred and twenty dogs. She issued thirty-six verbal warnings on animal complaints, issued five citations and this raised just below this shy of ten thousand dollars in donations. She also wears another hat as being the Ordnance Officer. She had eight hundred sixty-five awareness calls, like I said, these provided by Community Development, he's okay with me putting this on here, because he's, they're proud of it. Two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, she increased the services by twenty-nine percent and in the following year, twenty-three, twenty-four, it was an additional six point four percent taking calls, so she's a very busy person in our community. Community policing program, some other things that we're involved with, the Alice Program, this is more of a school-driven, and inside is for alert, lockdown, inform, counter and evade, it's just a program for the teachers inside. If they, sometimes they'll request us, some officers to go to their training, sometimes they don't. Bike Patrol Program, we didn't really utilize it much last year because of staffing. Marine Patrol, the same thing, we have our boat, you guys see it on East River Road? We didn't utilize it as much last year because of staffing levels. Deer Program's up and running great, that's run by John Canterbury, Officer Canterbury, have you guys ever seen him? Perfect guy for the program, he really does care about kids and care about the schools and he knows while he's working, he does stop in the different schools at different times to show his face and be seen. Grozeal Safe Key is a program designed by Officer Delpias. She basically created a program that, for all residents, is free, that, where residents can go onto the website and log their medical conditions, key codes, emergency contacts, so when officers, and me being, working midnight for several years, I remember going to a house, we get a call from something inside, but we don't actually know if it's that house or the other house, this is a way for residents, it's secured, only dispatchers can get access to it, giving medical, fire and police access to whether maybe a key's hidden or a code. It's actually, I think we have like over seven or eight hundred residents now households in it, if I'm wrong about that number, I apologize. New World Computer System, that's our CAD system run by the Downriver Consortium. Operation Chill, we put in every year for a request from seven-eleven, they give us free Slurpee coupons to give kids for riding their bikes to school with helmets, we also give them to the officers, they see kids during the summer, give them the coupons, just have interaction with the, with these kids, let them know that we're not, what's on TV, it's a great public for the kids, interaction. Our Facebook page, and now we have a new Instagram page, I don't want to brag, but I was the first follower of it. I think we have six or seven followers now.
Second.
You're the second? It's G.I. Police, and then our address, two four five two five, G.I. Police, two four five two five, nothing's posted yet, but we're trying to get another social media platform that's gonna be connected to Facebook. And then, as I mentioned before, the Grozeal Reserve Unit. So if I'm going too fast, just let me know. Partnerships, thirty registered court, and I talked about the DCC, I think Consortium was conference, they're the ones that oversee our nine-one-one systems, our computer program, the CAD system for all Downriver, it's all the Downriver departments all share costs for these systems that are used by everybody. The Guidance Center, like I said earlier, the Grozeal School District, when they call us and ask for support, we're always there, whatever those guys need, we give them. And Officer, the Office of Highway Safety and Planning, that's overtime grants, and then the Wink County Prosecutor's Office, the bottom one there. Some more additional partnerships that affect our community, the Arson Task Force, we have no one on that, but I know our Fire Department has, whenever there's an arson Downriver, all the cities will chip in people to do it, and then our detectives will also tag in on that, if it's a suspected arson on the island, run by the Fire Marshal, he'll be our, our point of contact for Grozeal. Downriver Mutual Aid Dive Team, which is, we have one person on that team that's Deputy Chief Todd Brozak, and he also runs, he's also the commander of the dive team, so he wears kind of two hats there. Downriver Crisis Negotiations Team, we're hostage negotiations as we all grew up with, we have a detective, Detective Sacotera is on that team. We have a Downriver SWAT member, which is Officer Benson. Fatal Accident Crash Team, we have no one on that team, but if we ever have accidents, we've had a couple, we've had to call them, they come and respond and they'll handle our larger accidents if we, if we have a call, and they've always been great responding. Major Crime Task Force is not a formal team, what it is, is an agreement between all the chiefs that if we have a major incident like a shooting in one of the cities, not too long, about a year ago, every city sends a detective to that city, falls under their mutual aid, and then it's like, it's like a multiplier, instead of having one detective, they have twenty. And it really benefits, we, we have that right too, if we ever have a situation where we need that. Any questions on that? Current revenue sources, we currently have this COPS accreditation grant, I think it was a hundred and, I think thirty thousand dollars we got for that. M. Coles Continued Professional Education, this started about two years ago, CPE funds, the State of Michigan gives, gives us funds only for sworn officers to be used for training. It does cover overtime, so, but they also mandate what trainings have to be done, so we're, we just scheduled one, department-wide one, which will cover the overtime for that about two months. M. Coles three oh two funds is both for dispatch and police, and then my SNAP funds, these are all from the State of Michigan, is just for dispatch only. Operation Stone Garden, I don't even know how long we've had that grant, it's gone on for probably twenty years, you know Joe, twenty, twenty-five years?
It's, I know it at least of twenty-two.
We, it's provided by the state and it's basically greater security for State of Michigan and it's an overtime grant. Tobacco compliance for the businesses and the Bulletproof Vest partnership, which pays for half of our, our bulletproof vests. Alright. This right here, yep, yep.
We go back to the Stone Garden?
Yes.
Okay, so when they give you that overtime, what is that for? Is that for like water security, is that for security on the island, are they looking for drug interdiction, what are they looking for?
We use it for the boat primarily.
Okay.
You go out there and you're basically looking for like violations or, it's a whole wide range of, you make, you make contacts with the public or you sit back and watch the public, you're basically looking for national security threats. And then it's, that sounds very like a big umbrella.
Right.
But we've come across different things, I mean, in the boat, they pull over a boat just to check it out and the guy's drunk, well now we use that, or intoxicated, that fund carries for that arrest. But the, the goal is to just have contact and be a presence in the public, sometimes some cities use undercover cars, we use on the island, a marked car, it's, it's changed from here to there.
Right. So this grant though, it covers, you're looking for like drug interdiction, you're looking for human trafficking, things like that?
All that stuff.
Okay, so, has that brought anything, because a lot of waterfall communities have this grant available to them, has that brought anything to the Grozeal Police Department? Have you guys were able to uncover anything, I guess is why I'm asking?
Over the years, I know we've come across some bigger things, like I had some when I was on the road many years ago, from like, we have not found, if I may, I'm not making a joke, but any terrorist organizations, we did find people on terror watch lists through, coming through the island here, I don't even know how long ago that was, it was over a decade ago, and then, but that, they, we, we pass that on to our partners, like the FBI, that one went to that. Do we have major crime things, we have not found that many.
Okay.
Overtime, but the government does reimburse us on the overtime.
And if I recall, that grant is a specific period of time in the summertime, it's like June to, is it June to August or June, I forgot the actual timeframe that is.
They have a timeframe, but then like, the year before, the, the, the funding ran short, so it ended it.
Okay.
And then I think the last year, it ran a little longer, because they had additional funds that were unused, so it'll kind of come back, Deputy Chief Brozak, then he came back and said, there's five thousand dollars left, don't quote me the number.
Right, right.
For all, for all of Downriver, so, but, once again, you have to have staffing to do it, you can't, we don't mandate officers do this, they can do this if they want, because it's also a burnout factor with our.
Oh, of course, of course, and actually now, since you brought the staffing, I want to bring, if you don't mind, I won't go back to, you were talking about calls for service earlier at the very beginning.
Yep.
Was that calls for service combined with the officers on the road, and it generated call for service, or is that actually people calling into the police department?
It's all of it. People walk in the lobby, traffic stops generated by the officers or, and then calls in for service.
So one of the questions I would have then, is the, the fact that you're undermanned, I guess, understaffed from where you used to be, would that contribute to the fewer amount of calls for service generated by the police that's on the road, because you don't have as many on the road?
I don't think that's an exact answer, and what I'm, if I may explain what that means is, um, there's a lot of factors, I would say, this is my opinion. If people don't call in or don't have a need for service, that's, that's just a natural, the numbers go up if you go way back for over the years, this is kind of a bigger dip. Also, we've noticed that, we did have a shortage in officers last summer, overtime was, it was causing burnout, so, and I'm not making excuses for them, I'm not, everyone in our department stands up and does their job and comes in there.
Right, and that's not what I'm trying to allude to, I guess what I'm trying to get is the fact that there's not as many officers on the road as there used to be, does that contribute to not only the burnout, but the fact that there's not as many proactive stops or proactive occurrences coming about?
I know.
Because it wouldn't have as many people out there.
I know, I've noticed, we've noticed as a department, the last month or two, our numbers have picked up on traffic stops, so it's, usually in February, it kind of dips down, just from when I worked for it all these years, but it's actually gone up this month.
Okay.
That, I can't, I don't want to say due to officer burnout or narrow it down to one factor, I don't think it's one specific thing, I, I know that's not what you're looking for.
Right, I'm looking, you think it could be a contributing factor, I guess?
Yes, I think it can be.
That, that's why I'm getting at, I'm not trying to pin the blame on anybody.
We're gonna go into.
I'm trying to look at a correlation between why our calls for service are actually going down, because, well, let's face it, we all know what's going on outside of this building, right, in, in the world itself, and crime isn't just going away.
It's almost gonna seem like, you and I talked, this is how it's set up, my next chart is gonna be our, it's gonna be our staffing, that wasn't a setup, it's all, just, but.
Okay.
If I may, it's kind of.
Sorry.
No, I, no, that's a good question to ask, if I can answer, I can answer. Um, this is our organizational chart, so this is for twenty-four members of the department, and you can see where you have our platoons, so the lieutenant here is part of day shift, but he oversees all of the, the platoons here. Then you have your detective bureau falls on a deputy chief, he's actually acting as a, assisting detective bureau DEA and all the different assignments. So in last, we're supposed to have twenty-four members, right now we have twenty-three. In April of this year, we hired Nate White, got hired, he's on midnights, we also replaced our Administrative Secretary Wendy Robledo in August, so I put this now, we're at twenty-three members, and why this chart is, and these dark boxes here are, this is, we have one officer that's not, the position's not filled, and we have a person that's on long-term injury right now. Yep.
There are people there, but they're not working because of illness or injury or something.
As well, yeah, can you guys see, do you guys see the cursor moving on that? Actually, I just lost my cursor, okay. So this right here is an, we don't have a person in that position, this one right here is a long-term illness, or injury, department injury, workers' comp, okay? So right now, if you look at the way the structure is, you have these two platoons here, sorry, my mouse is not cooperating, these two platoons right here have an extra person, so you can jump these people between platoons, the way the contract is written, there's an extra person on this platoon, they can be jumped back and forth and so more, so forth here. Currently, right now, we're at four people down, so we have the one person that was, but that's, that's the twenty-fourth officer, this one is on workers' comp, this one is also on workers' comp, but he's expected back in about a week, and this, this officer right here had a planned leave of absence that was, that's, they, they told us about a long time ago.
Who can you go back a slide, Chief, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, if I'm reading this right, during the day, you have one sergeant, four patrolmen's and two dispatchers.
Every platoon will have one dispatcher, two patrolmen and a supervisor, the one in the middle here, this, this, this one just happens to be lieutenant.
Yeah, so I guess I'm, I'm thinking about manpower per shift, not necessarily like manpower per platoon. So, during day shift, you've got a lieutenant, a sergeant, two patrol, or I'm sorry, four patrolmen and two dispatchers.
Those are two different platoons, they're not all working at the same time, so like, the, let's just go with the one on the left.
Aren't they twelve-hour shifts?
Correct, so when that day shift is on, the other day shift's off.
I see it, okay.
Yeah, so you only have four dispatcher, two patrol officers and a sergeant or lieutenant, depending how it is, so you have two platoons on, one day shift and one midnight, and then the other ones are off.
Okay.
Is this because you're covering seven days, or?
The way the fourteen-day schedule.
Twelve and twelve.
Yeah, you have to have minimum staffing is two officers per shift, and then you have to man it twenty-four hours, holidays, weekends, all the.
If I'm working days, what days am I working? Am I working every other day, or?
It rotates like, currently the platoon that started today is doing, they're like three on, two off, two on, three off, it kind of rotates throughout their two weeks and then it starts over again.
Yeah, and they're doing twelve, so they wouldn't necessarily work five days a week either.
Right.
But, like in the, for instance, if I can go back to this one right here, so we have four off right now, I do expect this one on the far left here is gonna be back in March, this was planned and scheduled, and then this one is off on a workers' comp injury, we expect them to be back, but that leaves us eight people, I'm counting lieutenant up here, eight people, so when you have eight people to do these platoons, one of the midnight people from the night before, this is what happens going on today, the, took a PL day, a personal day, it's a day off, they have the right to take the day off, they shortened that platoon, so one of our day shift officers came in at three in the morning, they're working until three in the morning, until seven o'clock at night.
When did you lose that one spot? You lost a, has that been?
Twenty-one, twenty-two, somewhere around there, the year.
Just from budgeting, lack of budgeting?
I wasn't here, I mean, I was here, but I was not part of the administration at that time.
They just didn't have the finances to pay that person, or?
That was the issue.
The cost-cutting measure to save the funding.
Balancing of the budget of almost four act, four budget years, I believe, three to four budget years.
I know we talked about it last week, I think it was twenty-one, twenty-two, somewhere around there. Yeah.
When you're that skinny, it's hard to lose someone, too.
Well, when, when the systems, when everybody's, sorry, when everybody's, when it's running right, it runs right, it's just, we're just, last summer, we were down to four again last summer, we were down four people last summer, then they come back and, so currently, we're at four right now, but I expect the two left columns to be back soon, but during the summer, we know we're gonna have some more shortages, so.
Right, so I think to Michelle's point, it's a lot easier to juggle your scheduling when you have that additional person, it just kind of simplifies it a little bit more.
I, I don't know if I would say that would make it or break it, but having any additional people helps.
Right, it makes it easier.
It's kind of common, yeah. So, sixteen, yeah, sixteen hours.
Sixteen is the most hours they can work? Okay.
Oh, that's a double, that's a double, the most you can do is a double, it's sixteen hours, so, we can't order them past that, so.
I don't think we want them on the road.
When you have shortages in platoons, a lot of the officers step up and fill those positions and dispatchers, because there's also dispatch overtime, so if we can fill dispatch overtime with a dispatcher, it's more cost-effective.
So if the officers were working eight-hour shifts instead of twelve-hour shifts, they could work more days, and, you know, before they start running into?
You look at it this way, when you have, you have to have a twenty-four hour cycle, we understand that, right?
Yep.
Doesn't matter how you piece it together, you have to have two on, we all agree on that, but when you have eight hours, you're actually working far more days per the year, and you're just adding on, you're adding on both ways to the, to the wear and tear on the tires, to the officers, so you work five on, the way the old schedule used to be, is you had five on and depending how the cycle worked out, you have like a Thursday off and you have like four or five on again, so if you got ordered on a Thursday, which happened all the time, you worked ten straight days, that's on eight-hour shifts, so then you have it on twelves, it's the same, it's apples and oranges, it's just, you're just, you just don't have, you have to maintain the shifts.
I was just thinking it would give you more flexibility with eight-hour shifts.
I know, I'm not trying to advocate for either one, but I know the officers and the dispatchers, great, they favor twelves by a long shot, I did that study for my Staff and Command.
And it's contractual, so they're really, we're not gonna be debating that till the next contract, yeah.
Right, fair enough, but I, I can say this, that I worked twelve, I worked tens, I mean, eights and tens before my career, not twelves, but I know that, especially in the younger officers, it's what drives people to departments, they get more time off, but when you have a short staff, with, like, right now, if the eight people working the four down, the days off, you're working, you're working overtime, so, I'm not sure if I'm explaining that correct.
Doug, have you costed out what it is to add ahead, because part of the cost would be offset by less overtime of the other officers?
I don't, this is where, I don't know if I can answer this correctly, but you would think that if, I'm just gonna make up a number, is a hundred thousand overtime and officer costs a hundred thousand, you swap them out, there should be no overtime, it doesn't work that way, because you have situations like this, where, when we had COVID and we were down to eight people, nine people in the entire department from twenty-four, so you can't plan for those things and say, everybody is not gonna take vacation during the, you know, summertime, no one's gonna get sick, they can promise us, you know, that's not realistic.
But you can do some averages based on what you've seen in the past couple of years, and, so it's not just a hundred grand, there is an offset from overtime.
Right, that, that, we've talked with our, the financial director about it, we're trying to work that out, and our commission has talked a lot about it, that's actually been a topic we've talked a lot about in study sessions and whatnot, but I don't think I can give you an accurate answer to that. We've talked a lot about in study sessions and whatnot, but I don't think I can give you an accurate answer to that. So.
My understanding, or this, I'll ask this as a question. My understanding is when you use the 12-hour shift, it actually costs the township more.
Per year.
Per year.
That's true. I don't remember offhand what the cost number is. Do you?
It's because it increases the total annual hours of work is what it is.
Would the union agree that?
They can, the amount of hours they work.
In straight time.
They agree to take it in straight time instead of overtime for a cost saving rate of township.
But you're having more overtime with 12 hours, are you not?
I'm sorry, what, what's wrong?
I was thinking with 12, with, with Ben working 12-hour shifts, there's a higher proportion of overtime in that than if you have eight hours.
If you have to maintain a 24-hour shift with two people, it's about, it should be the same number or close to it because they don't overlap. So if you have an eight-hour window missing, they're only going to work eight hours overtime. If there's a 12-hour shift missing, they're going to work 12 hours overtime. But if you have eight hours over multiple days, it's still multiple shifts.
But eight hours hits at 40 hours a week, right?
And that, that's different than the eight-four.
So if I work four days of 12 hours, I'm already at uh, 12 hours of overtime. Yeah, eight hours of overtime.
Right. I understand your questions, but like, uh, Mr. Supervisor said, it's a contractually. And I know it makes them happy.
And it's on straight time and it's actual hours work. So those are patrol hours.
Right.
So you're, you are paying more, but you're getting the equivalent of almost three quarters of a head just in time on the road or patrol hours in the, in the field, right?
At eight hours, they'd never get a day off, would they?
It would. I worked eight hours most of my career here, except when I was at DEA, but there's always. When you have a small department and you have Manning or staffing issues, there's always going to be overtime and it kind of ebb and flow and kind of comes and goes.
But if I'm working 12 hours, I can get my hours in faster and then take some days off.
We get more days off when you work 12s.
Right.
On a perfect schedule that's not impeded by staffing.
I mean, we talk about officer burnout. We need to make sure they're getting their time off as well.
They, they get it, but I think when you see right here with these four, now they're, they're, they're still fully staffed as long as no one takes off. And that's something we can't, they earn that time to take off. All of them, the dispatchers and the officers. We always forget about the dispatchers. They get that time too. So.
I, I'd like to make one other comment about the, I believe there was money taken out of the budget uh, in 2020 or 21, as you mentioned. The question of, the question of whether it was done because of budgeting, that I think that is up for debate. I think that can be debated. It was done, some, some will say it was done arbitrarily. And I know you weren't here at the time, but I think that is debatable and, uh, I'll just leave it at that.
That's what myself and the supervisor were talking about. Like I wasn't. Right. So.
Do you have a budget slide? Coming for 2024 though?
Coming. It's coming. I think it, I didn't be next. I don't have the order.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a, uh, we're two away. Um, any other questions on this? Okay. So this right here, I think we've all seen this one a lot of times. This is our funding revenue sources. So we have the three bottom police operating millages. Those are dedicated solely to the police department. The top two allocated and operating are ones that we've typically shared with the township. And then currently the police department consumes all five. And that's what my next slide is. And this goes back to you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Yeager. So this one right here, um, this one, I'm going to take a second to explain this one. You can see some of the past years, some of the future in here, the future here. So I'm going to start from the left. You see the wages column, the 3%. These first three columns I have no control over. This is contrastually. Okay. Contrashly, this is a 3% wage increase. There's that one. The 4% is something that we'd use in the past as a, uh, industry standard, but this year, talking to Teresa, she asked us to use 8%. So she's kind of predicting maybe an 8%, 8% bump in healthcare this year. So every one of these are 4% except for this one. This one's 8%. Right here's the, the retirement MERS, pretty straightforward. The 10% of the budget is really where we can only make a lot of the cuts, which we've already made a ton of cuts in it. And then, uh, this is that tally. So if you go over to the far right here, this is a projection or the township came up with what a mill may, um, taxable value may be for one mill. Okay. So we got to make, I want to make it very clear. This is a projected, this isn't a, so this, this will change the, the rest of my presentation here for this. If you go back right here, you can see that the taxpayers voted in 6.6 mills. And due to the Headley, we only collect 5.7879 rounded to five to 79. This is all we can collect on the revenue.
Are, is the general allotted and general allocated, those are police-specific mills? Okay. So those are the township general fund mills.
We, we share them with the township. So if we don't use all the revenue, traditionally they've taken it back to the general fund. But this, but what I'm about to show is we're consuming all of it now. Does that answer your question there?
It does.
Okay. So back to this, if we're using 800,000 as a projected and this is a draft, and you times it by the member of the mills, I said, you, we, we only collect this amount right here. If you times it by that, that shows a revenue of 4.630. Now, when I did this in front of the police commission meeting, when you add the total of these four, this is what that comes in. This is a projection. This is a draft. It showed a difference between, we were using a different millage, uh, taxable value. So it shows that there's a possible shortage of 112,000. Now that number sounds like a, oh, that's not in budget world, that's obtainable. But this is where we have the conversation of the 10% right here. We've cut almost everything out of there. In the years passed, I can show how we've used forfeiture properly, but as the, like a crutch for the budget versus a supplement to the budget. And this is where, when I talked, I think, uh, Mr. Yeager, you'd asked me in a different board meeting a while ago, we discussed forfeiture. I kind of was talking about how we had 78,000. Now we have a million. I'm not hiding from that, but we ran it so hard into the ground, we were at 78,000. I've, we've spent, I think last year it's been about over 300,000 and you're going to see where we spent it coming in some future slides for department improvements. But if we have to, you have to also maintain forfeiture for the future. You just can't spend it assuming that there's going to be large amounts of money coming in the future. Right now we're on a tidal wave of good for, good fortune with forfeiture. So what this is showing is basically if all these numbers played out correctly, which I, I think they'll change, we'd be about $112,000 shortfall in those five millages for revenue.
For next year or?
Or starting April 1st. And this is only for funding 22 officers or 22 members of the department because we pay for the 23rd person out of forfeiture, which we're allowed to do.
Derek, let me just repeat that. I think I understand, but I'd like to be sure. You're saying from April, uh, now to April of 26, a shortfall of $112,000.
Well, we could, depending on what the taxable value of a millage is.
Yeah.
And how that all plays out and where that all falls. And what our, we just start, we're starting the budget tomorrow with us on our side to see what our, to see what our, to see what our number is. Right. These are very loose projections, estimates. I'm just trying to give you that this is what we're seeing before we got there. But this, the whole point of the slide is we're now consuming all five of these. Before they'd have surpluses or extra revenue that would go back to the township, going back to what Mr. Yeager said. Now, if this is the case, we're consuming all of them.
Well, you're basically demonstrating a need for more money.
So yes, you can look at it that way, Bill. So that's why Chief Carmack has on that slide, the word draft. So it's important to understand that, you know, Chief Carmack and Deputy Chief Brozek want to make sure, and so same with, um, all of them. They, they want to make sure that we are all really clear on where they're at on their budget right now because we are moving into that, you know, um, budget discussion area. And they want to be sure that not only are they aligned, but that we understand where they're at so that we can understand what potentially we have to deal with. Not just with public safety, the police, but with all the budgets based on how this particular budget is going.
Oh, if we go back, thank you, Michelle. And if you go back to the far right here in the yellow, you'll see that 4%. That is a projection of, we don't, we won't have that number. And that number will factor into what a taxable value is, which will factor into what that is times the assessed mills to what, if there's an overage or a, um, a shortage, but the whole point is we're close now. That's the whole point of the slide is to show we're not generating a ton of revenue over. Is that clear? Like, that makes sense what I'm trying to say? Any questions?
Yes. So if you go back to that slide on millages, so you have 1% or 0.98 that's expiring next year in August. So I was asking Derek about this, even if we did something on the millage and Derek jump in, but so there's not an election until for that, you could even put a millage on until next year, right?
Well, the next scheduled election is in '26. Anything prior to that would require a special election.
Which we would pay like?
15,000.
$15,000 if we ran a special.
12 to 15, I think is what Brian.
So likely this, this coming up year is not going to be fixed by a millage. So it has to be the general fund, right? The budget?
Well, and I, I think that's, you know, we go through the budget process. We take a look at revenues expenditures. There's a whole lot of conversation that happens through that process with subcommittees and study sessions of the board and public hearings. And, you know, there'll be a, a ton of conversation about, you know, all the departments and their financial challenges.
But I think that's our only flexibility, right? Cause we won't run another millage for 15 grand. So any changes that we make would come through the budgeting process.
I don't know if we're there yet. That's what the whole budgeting process goes into. Yes, you're correct on that.
I agree. I don't think we're there yet, but if it was absolutely necessary, yes, we would consider doing something like that. Right now, we haven't exhausted all of our other options. So until we're at that space, I don't think it's necessarily optimal to, to go straight to that.
I mean, a special election isn't like a, a 12, 12 to $15,000 isn't going to break grossing our budget.
Not if it were absolutely necessary.
The 112,000, if that ends up being the number, doesn't mean, we've, we've slashed this budget so hard over the last couple of years to, we've relied on forfeiture. That's what it's for, but you slash too much out of it when you have your approved budget. It sounds really great on paper and how it falls out through a calendar year. This is everything from what you do to all you guys do. How it shakes out in the weeds is, uh, we're not, we're, we're pretty cheap on the, the police department side. We, we rely on forfeiture to fix everything. We're going to see those slides, what we relied on forfeiture for.
I think my, my point is, as administrators, as the, the chief, town administrator, finance director and all the department managers for that matter, you know, our job is to paint the picture for you, provide you with what options are available to you, and then you guys will decide what direction you want to go with it. So you know, like I said, over the next four to six weeks, that's going to be a lot of the conversation is communicating with you about what positions we're all in, in all of our departments and what your options are available to you.
So if, if we don't have a special election, the police will lose 1.85 mills. Is that what essentially we're saying?
No.
No.
No, that's a, that's a millage renewal.
No, we want to either do, like, so we're saying, we'll say we wanted to go, I don't want to go deep in too deep in this. We'll say we wanted to go for a millage. We, and we want to do it in this time.
Yeah. If you show them that millage, it shows when they expire. So that's why.
Let's say we wanted to go for another millage.
I thought it was 2025. That was my confusion. Okay.
I'd like to throw another point in here though. The, the first two, the general allocated and the general operating, uh, excuse me, that's the wrong point. I'm talking about the forfeiture. It's a source of revenue and right now it happens to be a bonnetful one. But in terms of, of being a stable and predictable and reliable sense of money, it isn't necessarily the same as having something as a voted millage. It, it, it's not.
Can't rely on your budget based on forfeiture and why. Then this, I'm going to go back to, I'm sorry.
That's the point. You said it better than I did.
The call, because he was, he was chief when I was a DEA and I know that I had some great years. It was seizing money for the PD and we had some bad years. And you gotta realize that for the last couple of years, we've had a pretty good return on the investment. But it's going to dip. I, I can't tell you when. I know there's some changeover. When you have administration changeovers in the government, it does factor across the board. I'm not talking about politics right now, but like in 2008, we had a different movement from different, um, political parties. It changes the DEA for a little bit, but it goes back, it recalibrates and keeps doing their mission. But you can't rely that every year you're going to make 200,000, 500,000. You're going to have that 1 million, 1 million dollar year. I've never seen that one before. That was like, they couldn't have come at better timing for us to help us with the rest of my slides, what I'm going to talk about, what we did with that money. So you also want to protect it. You want to keep the, that balance high because like we just, when I go into it, I'll explain to you. What we, what we did with the money this year for body cams, that's going to expire in five years. We know, we have a general idea what that's going to cost. But how are we going to pay for that five years if we don't have proper funding and then we drain forfeiture? Then I guess it just goes away. You have to balance it. It's like, it's like your home bank account. You don't just spend every penny you got. You got to put something away, you know, for the most part. So.
And also just worth noting that, and Doug, you can speak on this much better than I can. You know, that, that forfeiture money cannot be used to supplant operational budget expenditures. So you can't just plug that in anywhere in the budget that you want. It, it's to supplement the department and to aid in, in law enforcement, not to cover ongoing operational expenditures.
His use takes to it.
Very much so.
Federal forfeiture, that's a DEA money. Um, my Lars is overseeing government agency that he makes the rules for it. Like the generator, we've all heard, you've heard me talk about it. I cannot use that money for that generator, flat out. I've even asked for, I showed him a shell and email. I asked for like, pre-please special permission and they said no. I mean, it's, it's pretty clear. But the other forfeiture accounts, state and treasury that are, I call them dead accounts because they're not growing anymore. They're not being, no, no money's going back in there. Those are very limited funds to be used for, as I'm calling it, needed events. The generator to me is that important. So we can use part of the state forfeiture to pay for the generator. I can't use the big bank account. You can only pay for one person, the replacement officer. As long as you have a task force officer out there, you can use federal forfeiture to pay for that position. If we withdrew from DEA, we can no longer use that to pay for that, that, uh, now we have to go all 23 on the budget. There's all these rules on forfeiture. You just can't go out and buy like, let's go have a luau at the lower base. Down here, you can't do that. So we're very cognizant of that. So, all right. So it's like, it's almost like we had this all set up here. What have we done with this money? Completed capital improvements for 24 and repairs. We purchased and implemented the first ever body cam system for Grozil. Doing that, we had increased our Wi-Fi network and rerun some CAT six lines throughout the building. So there was a cost involved in that, but due to the accreditation standards with federal forfeiture, that allowed that. That's what that was part of. We got a grant just for that under the cops grant. Um, actually that was not federal, that was a federal forfeiture and the cops grant. In-car camera system, we've had that for, as far as I can remember, we just, the, the current system died. The board approved it. We used federal forfeiture to pay for that in-car camera system as equipment. We updated the records technology for, um, I think two or three months ago, the board approved that federal forfeiture. Um, we used a federal grant to update our evidence room and records. And then the last one, the metal cage, um, using state forfeiture on that one to make our department more up to the, um, national standards. If you look at that, that's five big projects we took on this year, just in 2024. Typically the Grozil Police Department does not take on that many projects in five years, let alone one. So we're, we're trying to, we are trying to fix this place. Our department has a lot of mechanical, IT, technological problems, like just updating the whole computer system. We almost got that all done. We can use forfeiture for that. What we have planned for projects in 2025 is, um, we were putting a lot of emphasis on our internal Michigan belt copper lines, but we're going to postpone that and put it back. We already did the RFP. We're going to, we have a little bit more time to do that. We're going to try and put my, more priority and more important things right now. Replacing, these are not in any particular order, replacing the 2018 laptops in the cars. Now they're out there all winter long. They, they come in the building, they go out of the building. Show me any laptop that lasted that long, that many years. We've, we've been replacing batteries, but we were told by the IT vendor that these are no longer able to be updated. So you're going to see an, um, a bid, our, um, action item coming through you guys' hands and probably about if you missed the Sheldon for about a month or so requesting, I have a, um, quote from our IT vendor, our township IT vendor for new laptops for the cars. That will be paid for. Federal forfeiture, the public safety and building generator. This is a, um, peace and fire with the two, the two ladies joint effort. We're right now trying to get some quotes to bring to you guys for an action item, just to have the township engineer oversee the project. just to have the township engineer oversee the project to go out for RFPs. We'll bring that to you guys in a couple of weeks. And that we're hoping that cell tower, state forfeiture, because they can't use federal for that, and then FD budget will cover that. Was already approved outdated, replacing our 2012 outdated tasers. That's still in progress. We're still waiting for parts to be shipped so we can implement that and then have that set into our grid or system. Replace the ID machine for the entire township. So I was notified about a month ago or maybe six weeks ago that the ID machine that we use, it's only computer specific is done. But we can, we can spend a little bit of money to get it back up. The computer, the the system is still good. We just have to buy a new computer for it and then decide which way we want to go with that. They make the IDs for the entire township. You got a question or? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Then we just updated our jail intake computers, the live scan with the fingerprints and all that, that whole network. That was running on a 2014 computer. We didn't realize it was that old and it died on us. So we had, that was approved by the board also using federal forfeiture to update that. So that's, some of these projects in '25 already been, we've already got some of them done. So we're taking on six projects for '25 to try to just get this department back up and running. It runs great. Everything works. It's just, you can see that a lot of the stuff's getting old and we're just trying to replace it. Future projects, these are not, some of these pictures you guys are going to see, these are not ones that we need to do today. These are the ones that you just got to be mindful of and figure out how some of these constructions are going to be paid for since we can't use the federal forfeiture. This is where the budget, we're going to need more room in the budget to fix some of these things. I think these will be past my time here. But seals around the doors, electrical lights and surface rust on the outside of the building. Minor cement work. I have some pictures. I'm providing this rust. The gutters are the original gutters in the building. To help the gutter system out, when the fire department did the roof, they did some minor repairs to that. But we also got the downspouts out to the sewer system, all of them cleaned out or replaced. But they need to be replaced over all the gutters do. Carpet in the training room is, we can't wash it anymore. Anytime we wash it, it buckles up and comes to trip, hanger, and we have to wait for it to settle down before we use it again. We cannot use forfeiture to replace carpet in buildings now. I think we used to be able to. I'm not sure on that one, but I don't think we can now. Here's some pictures, sorry. This this right here, this shows we've, because we fixed the gutters, this is actually water coming through a rainstorm inside the building. Do you see that right there? And you see it's all flooded right here, but this has been repaired through the roof project we took on. So now that the water's flowing out correctly. This is our building, built 1992. Some of the gaps in doors, we've fixed the one in the front of the building. That was a big problem right here. I think it was like, we got that one fixed and repaired. And then this is that cracked cement that's right here. Sorry for the picture of the guy at the carpet right here. This is one I just took off the internet. It's the only one I had. It just means that we have to repair that carpet eventually. This is our generator. This, I said it was a Chrysler before. This is a Ford. This is a Ford V8 right here, hooked up to a coal or gas turbine or generator, makes 80 kilowatts of power. So we had the engineers in today trying to give us information about how to wire the system and what we have to do to get a generator put in. They're going to come out, the CE reins is going to give us a proposal, how much they'll take to oversee the project. You guys will approve that. Doesn't mean you approve the generator, just the cost for the overseeing it. And then they'll go out for RFPs and do all their fun stuff and come back and there'll be a presentation to the board for that approval too.
The this and then the slide right before, those would all be joint expenses with the fire department, right?
Correct. And that's how we've we've run it 50/50 for the most part.
Okay.
Sometimes they may have individual things. It's only to them or to us.
Yeah, but this looks like both.
This is all joint and we've been working great together.
What does the fuel line generator runs on?
Natural gas. That's a coal or natural gas generator. We're going to keep it that way too. So that's our plan. This is just the phone, the phone network, but this is something we got, we got some bigger. This one's running good. It's just, we have it all worked out how we're going to go for it. We're just going to use that forfeiture money for other projects right now. Okay, these are, this is one of the laptops. Still works. You can see where it's got some pretty heavy wear and tear on it. So that's one of the ones we're going to replace. I told the board at the, sorry, the commission, the last commission meeting, I'm going to retire January 22nd, 26th. I requested the police commission to have a process in place. I don't tell them what to do. It's their decision to try to get a chief of police named by December 1st. Giving, I'm going to take a, my last vacation in December for like two weeks, a big family vacation. I'd like to have a person in place so I can give them what I was not given is how to, all the, to get into all the databases and all the federal stuff in this show what I have to do. Some of the things for me to get into, I had to get a letter from Derek to say that, yes, Doug is this position to get in there. We, I don't want to have to have that person go through this. Give them the training, give them the opportunity. It creates less confusion for the department. And let's just try to do this a nicer, smoother way versus what happened last time. So that's just my opinion. And Brian Field told me not to do this, but this is my celebratory slide.
I said it too, Brian. We like it. Why? Because it's real.
I can, I can hide it or we can go like this.
And this is why we love Chief Carmack.
Looks like AI.
Mr. Porciarelli, Mr. Porciarelli, if you'd like to, it's time to see personally, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Nothing, nothing.
But you didn't hear it, Joe?
One more, just one more time. All right, so. Any, any questions?
Yeah, Chief, I do have one, one quick question, just about the the generator. I understand is, are you concerned about it just aging out or do we actually have reports showing that it's deteriorating or going bad? I mean.
That's a good question. This is something we kind of looked into. So there's multiple answers to that. We had our township engineering firm and a, the person that they use for generators to come and look at it today. If you look at it, there's an oil pan underneath it. I don't mean an oil pan that's on a generator. It's just something to catch dripping. It's 33 years old. That doesn't mean it's busted. It runs every single week. Saturdays for an hour. It's something you want to do to maintain it. Last summer, it ran for, I think, seven or eight days. We had a big power outage. I don't know if you guys remember that. And then it ran, it didn't break. And every year we do a maintenance on it. And then we also do a stress test where they hook up and they make it run for 80 kilowatts. I don't know how they make all the power disappear, but it does. And then then that's a stress test. Hopefully it doesn't break, but that's something that you have to do part accreditation. So it's, it's a 33-year-old generator. If this thing busts, according to our ma, our maintenance guy, would be part of the process to get a new generator. Let's say it happened today. They're estimating 900 to 1,000 bucks a day to rent a generator, just to have it on site in case we lose power. And it's not going to be replaced in 30 days. That's $30,000. Might be replaced in two months, that's $60,000, and just to pay for the generator, that's a different cost. So we're trying to be proactive on it, on a 33-year-old generator. I can't say it's running bad, but we have had repairs done over time. It's just, I think it's, we're rolling the dice with something this old. So I asked the guy today, typically, how long do you go on replacing these? Because I figured these questions would come up. He said 25 years. So that's just typical replacement.
Typically, I'm just, so I, I just want to clarify, a typical replacement of a generator that's nature is 25 years?
According to the township engineers, the electrical firm they use, I asked the guy.
And we're 32?
We're 33.
33, right.
It runs good. I mean, just, you know, we can, but.
Probably should also mention too, Grozeal, the public safety building is a cooling and warming station. So if you ever pay attention on Wayne County, they'll list out for, you know, all their areas in Wayne County that are warming and cooling stations. Grozeal is listed as one, which is not the only reason it's very important to maintain that generator. But it's one of the many reasons that it's important.
If you look at it this way, this conversation came up today about the Wayne County. We're more, I'm sorry to say it this way, I'm more concerned about just the residents, not the entire county. I'm sorry. I just care about that.
Well, no, that's what I mean. It's warming and cooling. It's for our residents, yes.
Summertime, if the generator goes out, we're trying to, we're actually asking the electrical engineer. We asked him today if he could find out if that generator covers our air conditioning. We know it covers the heat, the, because it's a gas heater, but the spark on there. We, if the power goes out, remember we had, it was at minus 10 degrees a couple of weeks ago, or 10, zero degrees. If it went out for a week, I know just what ifs could happen. How are you going to heat the building? We have a 12,000 watt generator that we bought for the animal shelter for, or animal, or command center usage. We're going to ask them when they do this generator, if we are allowed to do it, to do a backfeed and a dispatch anyways, to cover it, even if that generator fails. But how are we going to heat that building, let alone for us? Water pipes and all the other things are going to go on there. So this, I'm not trying to do scare tactics. I'm just trying to be realistic about it. So.
I'm going to back up to a point you were making before about the time and the effort involved in replacing it. If we had the biggest checkbook in the world, just on normal operations, what would it cost to install a new generator if we signed a contract tomorrow? And how, I mean, how long would it take and would we be running a risk of not having power then? Or do we have some means for a backup?
I asked about that and that was part of that, why we were supposed to bring in today about the quote from CE reins kind of answering that question. But they needed more time because that engineer really, he really got into like.
Haven't figured that out yet.
No, they, they really got into, today we walked around the building a lot about the circuit breaker goes here, the big panel that's in the back there, if anybody's seen it, how the wiring goes. This is dispatch. This is where we put a secondary power source in there. They went through all that today. How we get backfeed just dispatch if everything went out and we didn't, if our generator went out.
Oh, my gosh.
We went into that whole, we went into that whole thing today. So that's where we're at on that process. That's why it didn't come today. It's going to be delayed until we know. We want to make sure we get everything we want on that if we're going to go that route. I'm guessing without knowing, a generator itself, just buying the generators, like 50 grand. And I did look into, if we just bought the generator on forfeiture alone, can we do that? And they said, no. Generator specifically says in there somewhere that you're not allowed to buy the generator, period on that. I just wanted to buy it as a piece of equipment. They said, no. The labor, having to rewire that whole system, they're going to have to take out part of the wall to get it, actually the old generator out and install the new one in and the whole fan system, exhaust systems got to get done. Then the wiring back to into the panels, that's all going to get redone. So it's not like a house generator where you just plug it in and have your buddy start it once a month, you know, it's, it's all.
Could the new generator be installed outside instead of right in the building?
It could.
But you wouldn't have to be busting up walls and all that sort of thing.
We already have the instructor, there's levers. It's just a metal bunch of levers in the back there. They're just taking that out. It's just unhooking it. They're not knocking out foundations and walls. They talked about it, but they can just take it to the levers. It's already built to be inside. You leave anything, you park your car inside, it lasts longer than parking in the driveway. They're made to be outside, but if we can do it inside, I prefer it.
I see what you're saying. I answered another question I had earlier. If you put it in.
Doug, and if I missed this in the beginning, I apologize to you. But when I left the department, we were looking at generators for this reason. And one of the reasons we did is because we had to figure out how much time, even if we rented a generator, did they tell you how that hookup would work, even if you rented one today to bring them in?
When they built the department from.
For emergency, I mean.
When, if they're not mistaken, the parking, those metal parking things we have, I don't think those were there. Those were installed later. That was, made it easier for them installing the generator. So they have to kind of go through the levers, a different way to get it, unless they take down those metal things, which we're not going to. The thing that the guy who does our maintenance told, he's a generator guy. It's all he does is generators. Be about 900 to 1,100 bucks a day to rent enough support to do the building. And that's, so if you do 30 days, let's just say 1,000 and round it off, it'd be like 30,000 a month. I don't, that seems high to me, but this is what he's saying to me.
Hold on a second. What I meant was, what they were telling us is they bring a generator in on wheels. It's from the outside, then they have to make a new hookup. You're talking, I'm talking about the one you rent until the ordered one.
Yeah, they just can't plug it in. They have to re. I'm not an engineer on this. I believe you're right. They're going to have to rewire the building. It's not, it's not like they have a switch.
And here's my point to that. The reason why we wanted to start looking at generators, even when I was there, is because the time it takes to get one in in an emergency, now, I don't know if the people knew this, I'm going to, this is, I'm not ashamed that I I didn't know this in the beginning, but when the whole new system went in with the, with the telephones, you always think you can pick the telephone up even when the power's out. Our telephones and everything run on electricity because of the system. So the 911 goes down, everything goes down. Let's say the power went out or that generator didn't work.
Exactly.
Then the time it would take to get one rented, wheeled in and hooked up, we don't have any communication whatsoever, even to charge our portable radios after they go dead.
Correct. We made a list for the the two liaisons, one for police, one for fire. This will become in the next proposal. We have a list of everything in dispatch that runs on power, electricity. It's that simple. But it basically wipes it all out.
Everything.
It wipes it all out. And then I'm not trying to be funny by this Michigan Bell thing right here, but they, that's our wired, that's our telephone room right now. Our department is so behind on that stuff that we actually have fiber optic coming into the building. We have a box that transfers it into analog. We're going backwards. So we're going fiber optic coming in the building, convert it to analog to facilitate the system. Our recording system, records our phone calls, is capable for fiber optics, but it only has analog. The 911 system will remain analog when we eventually do that project. That is run by DCC. They oversee all that. That's, that's part of the conference, the chryso, consortium, so that's a different project. But you're absolutely right about, you're absolutely right about the generator.
My point is, if our power goes out for five days and we start running that generator and it goes down, we lose everything for Grozeal Police and Grozeal Fire, including the telephones, until we can get something in and get it hooked in on a temporary basis while you are. So my point is, I'm absolutely in favor of somehow, some way, we replace that generator.
And charge these.
That's my point.
We can't use our radio system alone. We have to switch them to prep to prep.
Right. So it's point to point, what point you're using.
Which is a limited time. It's basically, if you're using Meridian.
It would devastate us as a public safety group if the power went out, we turned the generator on and it took a dive in six hours, let's just say. And it wasn't fixable, the generator, and we needed to bring one in. That's just my point. So.
I think this is, I'm not trying to use fancy words, but mission critical to them. It's our operational, operationally critical for our mission.
It is a lifeline to the people too.
I'm not trying to.
So when you see Chief Carmack's list and he alluded to it, it's significant. So I think that goes to supervisor's point and to Chief Carmack's point. So just another example is the island-wide siren network. I mean, I could go through all these. We won't. But I'm just saying, this is how significant it is and it's good that they're both pointing this out. So that siren will not go off without power. The fire vehicles, they are plugged in 24/7 in an outlet. They have to have that, that electricity. Total response, 911, as alluded to. There's numerous, numerous things. So.
CAD system, how we run people.
CAD system, and those are things people won't really fully understand necessarily, but yeah, it's, it's significant. It's worth pointing out. So I'm glad, you know, this, our supervisor pointed that out. Yeah.
I just want to, that's all I got.
Thank you, Doug.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Jameson.
Can you go back over to the runs, the calls for service slide?
Is that the first one, I think?
I think it was maybe the second or third one.
No.
It's the first one. So.
One second. There we go.
Calls for service are just somebody called the police station.
There's different ways to generate a call for, they can call, a call for service can be generated by an officer making a traffic stop. A citizen contacted, they go, hey, I'll be out at helping you change a flat tire, an arrest. People calling the station going, hey, we're in a domestic, somebody just gave me a lawn job, someone stole some stuff from Kroger's, the whole gambit. Or people walking in the lobby saying, hey, I found this wallet. That's simple. I mean, they're simple. It's the whole, it's the whole thing.
So is there a metric that shows what in the, in the fire service would be runs, right? So like you call the fire department and maybe you chat with the chief about your fire permit. That's a call. But we, it didn't generate any actual, so is there a metric where you guys can show that actually generated an officer to do something?
I think I can answer it this way. So back in '24, at the, at the end of, in the fall, we were going through how we calculate these calls for service, if that's where I'm going to go. And we saw, we're still using paper for some things, human checking out boxes or dispatchers entering, entering the CAD or the officers doing it on their side or admin and detective bureau entering stuff in. And then we realized in the, it's called LARMs, it's run by Tyler. That's our CAD system, computer aided design. When a dispatcher or an officer working the desk or they do it in their own, their cruisers, generate a call, there's a dropdown window. And then that's your categories. And we realized one of our detectives has really taken an interest with our deputy chief and our, oh, actually all of us and the admin of that how it transfers within that system to another call, we saw a glitch. We, we've never noticed it entirely, since I've been there. So we got ahold of Tyler and then Brownstown to say how, how can we change this? We got our authorities to make it more. We're trying to get to where we could show a sheet that there's this many calls during this year, this, this, this. But we saw that like, like even the fire runs, it'll go medical and then you hit it, it transfers to a sister or agency. Because the fire department is considered a different agency in that system. So you got to pull out assist other agencies for medical runs. That's not the way it's supposed to be. Animal control officers were, her calls were, it was a pre-programmed system. So we're trying to actually change it, actually as we talk, and they were writing a policy. Lieutenant Counsel is going to write a policy. Basically, these are the general categories. Basically, these are the general categories we're going to try to stick to on these calls instead of having. Different, it's something that they made it wrong. It's the way the system's been since I've been there. So we just kind of saw that trying to do what you're asking. I asked those guys, can we have a printout of all this? Why can't we use the system? We have all this. Well, we have paper too. Can't, so we're trying to get rid of paper, but we did get rid of paper and we saw that the way that we're having the entries, we have to go back to it.
Okay. So as of right now though, we couldn't tell what the call volume would be.
We could, but I don't know if it's going to be as accurate as we'd like it to be.
Well, I'm just looking for the total, you know?
Well, the 9,000 are the generated calls for service and then the 10,000 phone calls are the ones that actually people are called. But that doesn't show the 10,000 doesn't have, when you add in all the traffic stops and that's what the total, I don't have that number for you right now.
Yeah, and the 9,571 calls for service didn't necessarily. Cause a police officer to take any action, right? Some of them could be.
I would say most of those did. All the ones that like you calling and say, hey, what time is it? It doesn't create a call for service.
Okay.
That, but that's the human, those guys aren't, I, I believe that no one's gonna, the silly ones, if I called that, I hate to use that word. Are not going to be put into our CAD system because people calling all the time, is the bridge open?
Sure. Or yeah, is the chief in or?
Yeah, that's not a call for service. It's just not.
Okay, so that's.
And I'm pretty sure that nobody wants to generate the time it takes to enter a call for service for a, is it, you know, is Kroger's open? We get, we get phone calls that.
So it's 10,000 calls that were entered into the CAD?
No, the 10,000 calls are how many calls we actually had come into our dispatch from people covering everything.
Okay.
The 9,000 are the, I believe the CAD entries. About CAD entries plus the human marking. So that's what we're trying to, we're trying to get that better, if that makes any sense.
Okay, so it's about, it's about 10,000, 9,000.
Yeah, give or take, yeah. If that makes sense. Did I answer that question?
It does, okay.
Can I go back to that generator for a minute?
Sure.
I had a thought after I was listening to the conversation. I, I understood your remarks and concern about. Enclosing the generator, it'll last longer. I'm going to play devil's advocate and say that you install it outside. Now you could put a roof on it. But you're going to have to rewire this whole building. Everything's going to have to be re-aligned. But if you think of a car with a boat trailer on it, you, you plug something in and it all works and it goes the right way. If you had a sheltered outdoor machine, a generator. And you just had to plug it in, you wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel with new circuitry another time or move walls out. And all of this downtime that you're talking about would be avoided. And I think there's some merit in considering that. If you can get it quoted both ways. Because I mean, when Joey was talking about, about all this stuff that we would forego without our electric power. They're going to use our. Drop a generator in there and boom, that would mean tons to us.
The plan is to use the existing electrical infrastructure of the building that's already in place.
Okay, I misunderstood what I was listening to.
Knocking out the wall was one of their options that I don't think, it's just not cost effective. They can use that lever system and move that out. It's like this, it's basically metal shielding on the side of the building. As a generator kicks on, opens up to get ventilation, that can easily be removed and taken out versus a concrete wall. They're going to, they're going to front end load it right through there. It'll, it'll be in pieces and they put it together.
Okay, I needed to hear that.
They, they'll use the existing infrastructure with some improvements that they have to update. Like the way, but that cooler system on the other side of the wall, there's like a, a thing that basically monitors the cooler, how the power all goes and it sends it to the right boxes. That's the original one that will be replaced, but they'll be able to use the existing infrastructure, electrical.
Well, that's you go fairly quick, that part I'm talking about. You open that hole in the wall and pull one out and slide another one in.
It's going to come in pieces. I mean, there's going to be labor involved. I, I can't answer that. I don't, I don't.
I understand. There's a, there's a point there that in the design of it, if necessary, it should be paid attention to because. Lord knows how long we'll be here and another one will be needed. That, that being without service scares me more than, than.
Well, that's what they're, that's we're paying them to manage and if you guys approve it, manage and give us that plan. So I'm not an engineer. That's why we, they did our, um, our gas pumps, C Rains did. What a fantastic job they did. Costs a little bit more, but I am not, I don't know all the EPA, gas bearing tanks. I don't want any of that stuff. Not, you know, that's why we hired them. So they're going to come up with a plan for the generator and hopefully it work, you guys all accept it and then you're happy with it, so. All right?
Everybody good?
One comment.
Okay.
So Joe, you just called that meeting on what to do when the bridge closes for a couple of months. It sounds like. Maybe internally, chief, you need a meeting on what to do if that power ever goes out when putting in a new generator or something happens. Like, I don't know if there's a generator in this building.
What we, what we have in place is not the best. One, we have a 12,000 watt portable generator in one of our garages. We bought that specifically because what happened to the animal shelter over the summer, they lost power for a week. Right? This is going to happen in our building, so it'll be ugly, but we can back end a lot of dispatch through the whole. Extension cord, you know. Octopus, which is a terrible idea, but that's, that's about the only way we can go. Or, and then we talked to Michigan Generator, that's our, our service provider for our generator. He had to, he had to kind of get us, um. A generator backup. And I know down at DPW, they got a, I don't know, 20 or, I'm not sure what the kilowatts is. We, we explored that last summer.
Yeah, we've got a couple of portable generators that we have for the wastewater treatment plant. So, you know, maybe when they design the circuitry and the switching stations and whatnot. They might be able to install a, you know, a connection where they can backfeed it with a portable generator.
That's part of our requirements. What he's saying is basically, we might say where the box is, like, it's like a, compared to a house, but it's going to be commercial. You know, they take your fuse box and they put the connection for the generator and you throw the switch, you go to generator. We don't have that availability right now. With this new generator that we're hoping to get, to get approval for, even if the new generator fails at some point in the future, they'll have the ability to do that. And that 12,000 watt generator we have will be more than enough to supply the entire dispatch. That'll be the only part that'll be backfitted, that part. We already know, we identified that we isolated the panel today. They'll be able to, once they do construction, do that. That's something we worked on today, so.
Thank you.
Not that the generator isn't a great idea, it is, but, um, in a case where you lost both the generator and power. I mean, you could switch to a mobile command center, right? 911 call forwarding, charge the 800s in the cars. You know, as long as you got fuel, you could keep rocking.
And ask our partners down river to take over our, our communication system. That's already in place. It's been in place for a long time. Throwing the 911 switch, Trent used to pick it up and now Brownstown does.
Okay.
It's, that's already in place. Um. During COVID, I don't know if you guys remember, we actually closed our building and we evacuated to come here. In that room right over here, we actually ran our dispatch through, through a, through a couple of different computers we set up. We were able to do that. That was, uh, not the easiest thing to do. Sergeant Vasquez did a great job setting that all up for us, so. We have the, we do have the capabilities and then down river, they do have a mobile command center. That's not the same as. The dispatch, basically we didn't, with cell phones too, so.
Okay.
We, we would try to make it work as best as we can without inconvenience to the public. I can't make promises on that, but we would try to do the best we can. We would do duct tape and I don't know.
All right, are we good? Everybody good?
Yeah, I just really quick want to say thank you for providing us with this information and being so proactive. By coordinating and leading the effort to make sure the public safety building is maintained and both departments are able to support residents. I, I think it's pretty significant that you take this on and I just want to say thank you.
I appreciate that. And like I said, it's, I'm not, like the projects, that's everybody in the building. They're all taking on, the dispatchers are helping out. DB's, um, taking on a lot of the CAD system. Todd takes on a lot of these projects. And it ages them, it ages, it's just sometimes they're not that easy. It's five projects in one year. That's a lot. If you, it may not seem like it, but that's, those are not. If our department do five in one year, that's huge over like the last five, we haven't even done five projects. So we're taking on these things. Our goal was when we took on this administration, do, we're not going to finish it all. We're not going to get them done. We, we thought we could, we're not gonna, we've got five this year and then we have some, you know, plan for the next, the next group. That's. We've just, we just do the best we can, so.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Hey, I'm, if there's any more questions, I'm going to leave, so.
We're good.
If you have any questions for Doug, you can give him a buzz tomorrow.
We're called Joe.
Thanks, chief.
I heard that.
Good night. All right, thanks Doug. Uh, next is public comment. Anybody from? Mr. Kyle, come on up.
Hello, everybody. Kyle DeBose, 21719 West River. Um, thanks for doing that. I, uh. I mean, yeah, that's the biggest part of the budget, so seeing you all ask questions and having the public be here to be able to see that's very important. Uh, lots that I, I could update you all on, environmental and otherwise, but I actually wanted to talk to you all about the master plan. Um, officially calling for the board's help on that one. Um, uh, there are a lot of different reasons for that. The, the biggest one is probably, um, I'm going to just say procedural, I guess is the best way to put it, but more specifically. I'm worried that, you know, the Grozeal Township paid money for, for what was done for the master plan. Um, and that is not just about the money, but it's also about the public and the public's participation in the master plan that's in draft form right now. Um, and, um, you know, part of it is I will, I will hold myself accountable on this, but, you know, it, it's, it's all very complicated. Um, but, uh, there's a lot of different parts of it, a lot of different things to have opinions about. Um, but there's certain things that, that I wanted to, to bring to the board's attention. Specifically, there's a housing needs assessment that is promised in the public master plan. Right now that's out for common. It says. Uh, specifically on an appendix 5.5 community snapshot, and I'll email this to you all afterwards. It says. The full housing needs assessment will be forthcoming. Um, and I bring out this specific thing because that's been at the heart of a lot of the disagreement within the planning commission right now. Um, and what, what bothers me is that, that housing needs assessment has not been put out to the public. Um, I will say it's partly my fault that that didn't happen. I was not in a meeting where a planning commissioner removed that housing needs assessment. And I was also, I was also on the board when we voted to put that draft out there. I thought that that housing needs assessment would be forthcoming, like it says there. I learned since that it's not because that planning commissioner did not want it in there. Um, and that just doesn't seem right to me. If there's a, a master plan out there that the public's supposed to comment on. Everything that the public paid for should be able to be viewed and seed, uh, seen. And so I, yeah, I mean, that's a concern of mine. I will tell you all, I've been speaking to the different planning commissioners. They'll speak to me about it. I don't have confidence at this point that they'll bring that forward, so that's why I'm bringing it to you all. Um, and, you know, that's the, the very specific procedural issue that I can point to that I think isn't correct. But there's just more broad issues that, that I, I think is, is happening with the process. First is. I, I don't, I don't see a lot of room for the public in the planning commission. Uh, I, I know that there are not a lot of people that are commenting on it right now. I'm going to try and change that. But I'm not seeing even the few that I know have commented discussed at the planning commission level, which is very concerning to me. And then more broadly, my understanding is the planning commission is going to start basically taking out recommendations from the master plan at their next meeting. And again, those are recommendations that, that the public came together and this professional, you know, uh, person that we paid. Came together with these things and for the planning commission themselves to take those out, I think, I think could be a problem. I don't know specifically what they'll take out yet. Um, my understanding is maybe it's two or three planning commissioners will, will, will be against it and the majority will be in favor of taking those things out. Um, but, but yeah, it's a concern of mine. So, uh, those are procedural issues. I know, I don't know how close I am to my three minutes. Um, but I do want to just talk qualitatively, things that I'm concerned about, which is kind of what gets at the, at the, the heart of this. 20 years ago, a master plan was put in place. It did some good things. One of the things that it did well is it protected open space. That was the right call then and is the right call now. You theoretically, you could have put single family homes over open space. And, and it would have made the books of the township look better for a little bit, but over time, I think we'd have some of the same problems that you all are seeing right now with the police commission. If we were to do that today, if we were to take open spaces and put houses, we'd maybe see a little bit of a bump in revenue. But over time, we'd see the same thing we're, we're seeing right now. So I think that was the right call. The other thing they did then that might've been the right call then, but is not the right call now, in my opinion, is they basically put a stop on, on housing being built. Uh, and the way that they did that was, uh, making zoning basically very overly restrictive. And that's, that's where I think a lot of the misunderstanding comes. People think when you talk about changing our zoning ordinances, it changes the way our houses look right now. Our houses that are built right now, most of them were built in the 50s. They were not built under our current zoning ordinances. So when we're talking about changing zoning ordinances, we're not talking about changing our neighborhoods as they are now. We're talking about maybe rightsizing our, 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 uh, our zoning ordinances to what should be there. And, and the housing needs assessment, I'll tell you all, it's not written necessarily the way I would write, write it. There's parts that I agree with, parts that I don't. Uh, things I like. It talks about getting rid of R1E. You've all heard me talk about that. Talks about a community. Kind of coming together and rightsizing our zoning. I like that. The reason they, they took it out is, is it mentions affordable housing. Now, I don't know about you all, but if, if, uh, affordable housing being mentioned in our master plan somehow threatens our elite status as Grozeal, then. I, I don't, I don't, I just, I just don't see it. Like, then our elite status, we don't deserve it, honestly. Um, and it really is hard for me to hear people being scared of affordable housing. When those are the very same people that would be approving any affordable housing in the first place. And I, I, I wouldn't mention it because there's a lot of scare tactics around this, but the reason I do want to mention it tonight. Is because there are people that are going to be hurt by this. It's not outsiders coming in to, to build masses of affordable housing. That's not going to happen on Grozeal. The, the thing that, that this housing needs assessment specifically points out, there are poorer people on Grozeal. You all know that. There are not a lot, but they're there. And it's mostly older folks, older folks that are living on a fixed income. Sorry, you want me to stop? I'm sorry.
No, no.
Fixed income and, uh, and are having trouble maintaining their houses. And so the, the housing needs assessment very specifically points out, 400 houses are going to be having trouble maintained over the next 10 years. 100 houses that will lose. And the way that our zoning is set up right now. Is if those, those houses get lost, we're not going to be able to build them again because our current zoning does not allow those houses to be built. So not only are we not going to build new houses, we're going to lose houses and the, the finances that you all are seeing i- is, is going to be affected by that. So. I know I went over my three minutes. Thank you for the time, but I just wanted to.
Thank you.
I really need your all help with this. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I comment on that real quick to clarify a few things?
Yeah, sure. I just happen to give him some of Greg's time, so Greg, if you're coming up, it's minus a few.
So to be clear, because I, and actually I sent the board an email about this about a month ago. Um, about the master plan concerns I had. To be clear, the master plan is the result of community interaction with professional civil engineers, designers. And, and the whole gamut to provide us with a product. Um, and the more the planning commission modifies it from that base product based on. I, I don't want to sound flippant, but like whims and desires and concerns, the less it is the product that the public and that company we paid a lot of money. To produce is that original product, right? So I talked to Ross about that and I asked him to do versioning, right? And that was Margaret's idea, so thank you Margaret for passing that along to me.
Do what?
Versioning. So I told Kyle, or Kyle, I told, uh, versioning. So there will be a version zero, which is the original document that was received.
Okay.
From the contractor.
Yeah.
And then there will be iterations of it that have been changed by the plan.
That's versioning.
Yes.
Okay.
So the other, the other thing is the statement about affordable housing isn't low income housing, right? It's not saying put in a bunch of like section eight. What it's saying is modify the zoning to an order in, to enable people to. Purchase houses that cost a reasonable amount of money. Um, but I think that it's being misconstrued by certain interests as low income housing. And then the R1E zoning is a zoning overlay. And what that, it's a, it's a trigger rule. So as an example, like my house is on like a half acre. So if my house burned down, I wouldn't be able to rebuild my house under R1E zoning. I would either need to acquire more property or get a zoning board and planning commission approval for that. So good examples of this are especially on, um, like the river roads where you'll have a small cottage. Um, and it will be, uh, essentially someone will purchase the property, remove the house there and replace it with a much larger home. Or in the case of like a lot split where you have an acre and you want to split it into two lots and build two half acre homes. On a property, but you can't because you have to have, you know, an acre. And that's just an example. Those aren't the exact numbers. Um, but there was an issue that came up about a year ago, if I'm not mistaken, Kyle, with a lot split. Um, and it was that R1E trigger that caused that problem. So what R1E does over time is it forces us to have larger lots and larger homes. Uh, and that's, was the intent of the commission at the time and this board approved it and. I believe what Kyle's saying, not to put words in his mouth, is that maybe that's no longer serving our best interests, so. So thank you, Kyle. You're a great American.
I'd like to, well, just to. I'm liaison to the planning commission and, and frankly, I've only been to one or two meetings and. I can say this, I believe that there's an absence of a harmonious consensus. The thing is that I haven't had enough experience in all of this to have a solid opinion one way or the other. But I think that the, the conclusions, the, the conclusions I have or the, the thoughts that I have are, are several. We have people that are intelligent in that, that, that group. And no matter what position they have, they have an intelligent basis for the conclusions that they're coming to. And I would be hopeful that we could find a way to address those issues and come up with a way to handle. The needs of everybody who is speaking. Now, now for example, whether this would work or not, I just need this to make the point of what I would be looking for in terms of cooperation one with the other. An awful lot of people here, we have an older community. I mean, I've seen statistics that, you know, the, the percentage of people here who are senior citizens. senior citizens is greater than the national average. These people were here, they live in those houses they've lived in for a very long time, they raised their kids here. Now, what my point is, is that if we created more senior housing, it would vague, and they moved into it, it would leave housing there that somebody with children could move into and raise their kids there, and would be killing two birds with one stone and getting some money from the state for the schools. There'd be some synergies here in, in that kind of thinking, if everybody could come together. I would be hopeful for trying to organize that thought better. There's the concept, but I've got to have more familiarity with what people are thinking. I haven't put, I haven't had the exposure. But there's another concern that I have, that I've, I've not heard anybody talk about, and it's, it's, I, I worry about it to a degree. I think that we have to determine what our needs are before we determine what, as well as determine what our wants are. In a way, when I have looked at the, the documents that have been made available to me, it's, it's a wish list of what we think would be wonderful, would be beautiful, would be nice, somebody wants a library, you know, it reminded me in a way of, I have a jolly old St. Nicholas, you know, Suzie wants a dolly, somebody else wants a pair of skates. The concept is, is there, and we're working on that. What has me concerned is that it's fine to talk about that, but I've also heard comments from among colleagues that, uh, our budget is fine, we're paying our bills and doing everything, but we're running tight. What that means is your projections every year have to be accurate, you have to do them with care, and economic circumstances can't change much, or you suddenly will be shaken into difficulty. We have a lot of big-ticket items that we have to face. We've just been talking here about the police department, and I have no idea what that generator would cost, but money, real stuff, you see? And there's other stuff that has to be done, and we need it for our own safety. But we also have an awful lot of water pipe. And that water.
Bill, hold on, I just, I don't mean to interrupt you. Do you wanna add this to your trustees' report then, since we're kinda on?
I, I could do that.
Public comment, is that all right? No, it's up to you. I mean, we're gonna hear it one way or another, so.
Well, but the point is that, the, the reason I'm doing it now is because it, it's been introduced.
Okay, go ahead then. Go ahead, Bill. No. I wanna hear what you have to say.
The thing is that when we're doing it in small steps, we're putting in a lot of extra connections. If you connect at a mile, and you don't have to, or you go 10 miles and bring the equipment at, at, at one time and do 10 miles with it, instead of one mile with it, your costs are more effective, your reliability and future maintenance are reduced. But then you've got to consider beyond that, and I mean, it's millions of money, I mean, it's a million dollars a mile for a pipe. And, and it, it, there's a lot of pipe here. We've also got issues with, with liabilities for, uh, pensions and healthcare for retirees, and that's in the multiples of millions. And we have, I'm not here to fault anybody, we have a lot of confidence, uh, from the people I speak with, who say, well, this, the actuary says we're doing okay. I spent a lot of time with my brother-in-law, who was a damn good actuary. One of his clients was, he was lead actuary for Ford Motor Company. The point is that I sat there and drank a lot of gin with him, and I wasn't talking about his successes, I was talking about his worries about what, what could go wrong. So, so I'm looking at that, and I'm not trying to throw it out the window, but I, everything has to be right. And I mean, if you've got a huge, a huge pension that's sitting there, and it's off, your projection's off by six tenths of a percentage point, if you've got a big enough number, it's a lot of money, you see? So what I'm getting at is we have all these things that are sitting there, the need for, for, for utilities, the need for public safety, the need for taking care of our retirees, and then we add all this stuff we're talking about on top of that, that nobody's talked about. I'm saying, let's figure out what our needs are. Let's figure out what they cost. Let's figure out a way to take this property that we have, which is our only source of revenue, and use it to meet the needs we literally have.
So take a holistic view?
Yeah.
Yep.
In other words, then, you don't, we would have a coordinated plan. That, that seems to be in my gut. The problem is, I don't have enough solid evidence in my mind, like Kyle does, to feel confident of this, but that's what I sent in the wind.
All right, thank you, Bill. Greg, did you have some? Because there really is no time left. I'm kidding. No, are you, come on up.
Glad you could ask you.
All right. Everybody else in the audience, good? All right. Anything come in? Nothing? All right, very good. Okay, why don't you, Kevin, take the consent agenda?
I, um, I'd like to motion to approve the consent, consent agenda 24-085, which consists of the following.
Hold on one second, we need a second. I'll second it, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Number one, minutes of the January 27th, 2025 regular meeting. Number two, minutes of the January 16th, 2025 special meeting. Minutes of the January 16th, 2025 closed session. The check register dated through February 7th, 2025, and township staff holiday fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Any questions on any of these from the board? Okay, so content, consent agenda 24-085, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. The action items, next request FOIA portal. Jamison, is that you?
That's me. Both of them are me.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Uh, I move to approve the purchase of the next request PT economy plan for a cost of $5,988 annually.
Second.
Uh, so, we got lucky.
You need, you need somebody to support the motion.
We did.
I missed that, okay.
Uh, so, we got lucky, and for five years, uh, next request didn't notice that we were still getting a free FOIA portal. Um, they gave it to Brian, uh, to try to kinda get established in the area, um, and then, uh, they were purchased by Civic Plus. Civic Plus noticed that we had a no-charge account with them. Um, so in order to continue to have our FOIA portal with Civic Plus, it's going to cost essentially $544.36 per department per year, um, which is a pretty small price to pay to be able to roll up all the FOIA requests and whatnot. So, and I know here on the board, we don't get a whole lot of FOIA requests, um, but I, I think Brian fields them relatively often, so.
Uh, yeah, we average probably somewhere between 80 and 90 a year. Um, we've had years where we're bigger than that, um, but I think la, last year was 76. Um, so, it's pretty, pretty standard for us, is around that number.
Yep, so it's a, it's a good tool, um, we're already using it. I've had to put stuff in the portal before, uh, and essentially, we just have to start paying for it now.
I will add the, Brian and I spoke with all the managers, and they were all very supportive. They, they enjoy the simplicity of the portal, they're accustomed to using it. Um, we get automatic emails when a FOIA comes through, and then we can just respond in the portal by uploading documents to one central location, so it is well-received by the staff.
Thanks, Derek. Any questions for Jamison or even Brian? No questions? All right, action item number one, next request FOIA portal, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried? Uh, number two, you have, number two also.
Yep. I move that the township board of trustee here, trustees hereby amends chapter 67, commissions, article 10 of the communication, well, regarding the communication commission.
Support.
Uh, so this one, you can look in the packet, and you can see the original ordinance and then the updated ordinance. So, um, we have an ordinance regarding communication commission. Um, it's in chapter 67 where all the commissions are, and this one's article 10. It modifies a couple things, so, and actually, we haven't been, at least in the previous board term, we did not have a communication commission. And I don't know under what auspices we didn't, um, yeah, I wasn't around when it went away, uh, but it's at least my opinion that it needs to come back, and there needs to be some changes to, um, article 10 regarding that. So, the commission was originally set up to consist of seven, um, we're recommending it be reduced to five residents, uh, and a board, including a board liaison, so there'd be four members plus a board liaison. And that commission members have a strong background in one or more of the following areas, communications, telecommunications, marketing, public relations, and/or business. Uh, it does go on to, uh, modify duties and authority, and essentially, it just says we're adding social media. So the, a big update to this article 10 is just introducing the internet to it. Um, and that's, uh, that's pretty much it. It goes on to say it's gonna provide support to all township departments with respect to their communications, um, through consultations, and review and recommend cell tower contracts.
Any questions for Jamison?
I have some.
Go ahead.
Okay, so that's the first one. Cell tower, why would you have, like, how does that fit into the communications to review an agreement and renew?
I, I think, well, I think it makes sense because there isn't another department with, another commission with the education and background that this commission would have, since we're looking for people in telecommunications, communications arenas, marketing, you know, I mean, we could send it to, I guess, planning maybe, would be the only other commission that would have the kind of, um...
Or just Derek.
It always had, it was always in this communication commission, but it's exactly what Jamison's saying, is the goal is that, um, our hope is we would have these experts as part of this commission. Um, so that's why it was in there previously, so that's why it's in there currently. Um, we could revisit it, but the, the premise was exactly what, uh, Jamison just, just mentioned.
Yeah, there just isn't another, I mean, because right now, cell tower contracts just come directly to the board. You know, there's no commission that does anything with them. So at least, in this case, there is a commission that takes a crack at it and makes a recommendation.
Yes, I was just thinking of Derek, and he can run it by legal counsel, because I've read some of those, and they're pretty technical, so I, I would just recommend, um, legal review.
So they're, they're out for, um, our goal is, and we put this out at the, we agreed on this at the last board meeting, was, um, we put out an RFQ, I believe it was, it wasn't a P, it was a Q, for telecommunication, um...
Attorney.
Attorneys. So we're waiting for some of those to come back. Um, so it will be obviously reviewed by a specialized firm.
Yeah, it ju, it just seems like a funny spot to put it, like, I would say it with Derek, but, um, I can go on with the rest of my questions. Um, why, why did the school board, like, I guess the school board had a liaison before, but that was crossed out? Because I think that's our only touch point with the schools, isn't it? If we have them back on there?
Yeah, REC has a school board liaison.
They have two.
Correct. Um, schools, we used to collaborate with them and actually do their meetings at one point, uh, but they did cut us out of that, so we don't real, we lost all communications with them at that point, once they cut us out of doing their meetings, so, um...
Out of the school board meetings?
Correct. We used to film them, we used to do that.
Yeah, that's why the...
They moved on from us, so we kinda moved on from them.
They have their own broadcasting system.
At the same point. They have their own broadcasting system now, they hire somebody else out to do it. Um, so that was really the one point of having somebody on there was because of that, um, so that's why.
Because I was just thinking more of having that interaction with the schools, especially with communications, like, um, what's going on with the schools? We're doing ma, the master planning, do they have any insight to that? Just to have some kind of regular contact, um, on the more...
Mickey, just so you know, um, I am in contact with the school much more, I, I just know much more than last, any board member was before, and, uh, and our relationship is, uh, very strong like it was before, previous, so, and I'm, you know, I, I speak with them all the time, and I also meet with, uh, superintendent Audrey, and, uh, so, I'm, I'll do whatever you want, I, I mean, it doesn't matter to me if we have one or not, but, um, that was just the reason there used to be one, that's the reason why there isn't one, and our relationship, um, I know is as strong as ever with the school system right now.
I have no doubt with you, Joe. I mean, definitely...
I can just guarantee that.
But the, the ordinance lasts beyond our four years, so, I mean, just a thought. It doesn't have to, but...
We can talk about that, I, you know, I'm open to anything, so.
The intent of the school board liaison on the communication commission was because we were doing their communication for them, and we're no longer doing that, so I don't know that putting, at least in my opinion, I don't know that putting a school board member on the communication commission to liaise with the township is the...
Which is...
It doesn't have to be a school board member or a teacher, just somebody from education that has some kind of tie-in that, you know, even beyond us, is regularly communicating with us on issues, and I just think the communication team is looking at everything, and I just thought it was a nice way to pull them in.
Well, you can, uh, make a friendly amendment, if you like.
Well, so we, I, I mean, I, I, I wrote, rewrote the ordinance, so I pulled that out because they're really no longer part of, you know, the process with, they have their own, that's why it was removed. So, I think the issue is, they're very separate, except for REC has, you know, support, I think, planning, uh, no, planning doesn't have anybody, but REC has them, I think your Greenways has them, um, I don't know if anybody else has, uh, additional, uh, liaisons from the schools, but we didn't have that because we knew, the goal for the communication commission, from what my perspective is, is that we wanna be able to provide residents with, you know, everything available with ris, regard to, um, you know, information in every form possible, as long as we're remaining fiscally responsible. We really wanted to do something through a mailer that's not fiscally responsible, it's very, very pricey. Um, I did add in the communication requirements from departments, because, you know, I just had a conversation today, and we don't really know our department managers. Uh, I think it would be really nice to have communication showing, here's what the REC department manager's doing, here's what the airport, you know, those are things that we just haven't been able to do, and I think our residents, you know, should meet these people in one way, shape, or form, and I think it would make a big deal, a big difference. Now, if somehow, I think Brian already covers this, but when the schools have special events, he covers that in the cable, you know? He offer, that's offered to them as well, so that is part of communication, so that might cover what you're talking about, but if it's, you know, more than that, we can have another conversation or revisit things and, and look at other options.
Okay. Um, so it was that, it was when I looked at the language, I didn't see who would select the commission members, or if, um, one stepped down, for whatever reason, who would approve?
Well, that is written into chapter 67 as an overall provision for commissions.
So that's a different one?
Well, it's...
Not that it doesn't apply, but that's why I didn't see it.
All commissioners are, are selected at the pleasure of the township.
At the board.
Okay.
We have to vote on every commission, all commissioners, when they come in.
And my last comment was, when it said the type of experience you need, I would also throw an attorney on there, because anytime you are regularly communicating and writing, um, you may wanna have somebody look that over, since, you know, we're speaking on behalf of the township.
I think that's something we would also let the municipal attorney, so Kristen or whomever is gonna be in that role, because that's pretty specialized also.
Yeah, yeah, even if you use legal counsel, that's fine. And that's all my comments.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I'd like to ask why you, why we only have, what, do we have five members rather than seven?
I'll defer to Margaret, since she's the architect.
I apologize for not asking this earlier.
That's okay. No, we just, you know, sometimes when you get seven people, it becomes very unmanageable, whereas five becomes a little more manageable, and honestly, to be very honest with you, Kevin, I wrote it with five or seven, so I made it a little vague, and then we said, you know what, let's put it at five, five should be good, but if we needed to revisit that, it's my understanding that we could if we had to.
I, I like the, I like the five.
I do too, but.
Communication commission needs to be like a little bit agile.
I, I totally.
Bigger commissions are.
I'd like to interject.
I align.
There's a, there's a, there's a variety of skills that you're asking for, it would be nice to have. It's going to be hard to get that with just five people. I mean, if you went to this guy that knows all about the technicalities of working a, a cell tower, and somebody else who knows all about the principles of coordinating of a customer and, and a provider, and someone else who knows how to do public relations, the things that you're asking for to get in just five people, I think is a stretch.
Well, I, I, I don't know that it is per se, because we have marketing on there, communications on there, so you don't have to check every box, so I guess we could jump that hurdle when we get to it, if, if we feel we have concerns, but, um, you know, I see your point, but if we don't have an issue, I, I think, you know.
Better if it's an opinion on that. I, I, I think that it's going to be hard to get, if you want all those skills.
No, no, you don't have to have all of them, Bill, but if, if somebody checks at least one of those boxes is what I'm getting at. Does that make sense?
I would do a friendly amendment, though, to take the cell towers out of there because that's more financial, but that's just me.
Friendly if we accept it.
Depends how much ground you want this thing to cover.
I used your terminology, Jamison. Just my thought.
So it's, if the, if the, if the person proposing the, um, action accepts the amendment, then we can just modify it and vote on it, but if we don't, then we have to have a separate vote.
Is it friendly if I smile when I say it?
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, I guess.
All right, wait, just hold on a minute, all, everyone. We can do one of two things. We either can vote on this one tonight with five, with the cell towers. I'm not sure the friendly amendment, no offense to anybody on the board or the one making it, is going to fly. I'm not sure all of us, I have no issue, to tell you the truth, on how it's written. I have no issue on five. I think we have some very intelligent men and women in this community, and I think we can get five people that will work together in harmony along with, and we also, but that, five individuals will include one of the liaisons, which I know is Margaret, correct?
Yes.
So, um, I don't have a problem with that. Do you guys want to go through this? Do you want to talk about it? Want to table it, or do you want to vote on it? So I, I would rather just vote on it and we can work through it.
Yeah, it has a, it's been moved and has a second, so you would need to.
Right, it's either a friendly amendment during it now, or we vote, we vote on what we just said.
Yeah, you could vote it down and then table it.
That's my point. Well, if you vote it down, we can do it again, it doesn't matter. That is my point. So what I'm going to do right now, and we can always talk about this, there's no problem, but to move this and get this at least moving, I'm going to ask then, are there any more questions for Brian, for Jamison, for Margaret, or even Derek on this matter?
I'd, I'd like to move, after we vote, I'd like to move to table it so that we can review it in a little more detail. And I'll, I, I apologize to, uh, Margaret Shelton. I haven't studied this carefully enough, but I would like to review it in more detail. So.
Now, you would have.
You need to vote to table it, though, right?
We'd have to vote to table it to come back, because once we vote, it isn't tabled, it's over. And we can change it.
Well, you can always propose it again.
Yeah, I mean, you can, yeah, we can do whatever you want on that. Is the board okay to, we have to then make an amendment to table it? And get all the questions answered?
That, that might be a good idea.
It's up to you guys.
I, I go with moving forward, ask.
Yeah, I call the question, I think we should vote on it.
Going forward as, as well.
Okay, well, if he does, Jamison calls a question, then we do vote. Okay, all the questions are done. Um, we have to do a, uh, it's got to be a roll call vote, correct, if we, if we do it this way? Okay, so, for action item number two, communications commission ordinance amendment, a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Bill? Okay. Mark?
Talk about it.
Aye.
Kevin?
No.
Okay. Jamison?
Aye.
Margaret? I'm sorry, Margaret, Mickey?
Nate, I think it's a great idea, but I just want to talk about it more.
Okay, then I vote yes, so that is approved. Is that correct? Okay. Now, we can always, look, we can revisit this, not say it's a dead issue. We still can revisit it, everybody. I just want to make sure we get it in balance here. We move this forward, we begin the process, and we can do it this way. So.
Yeah, and we can always change ordinances.
Yeah, and I mean, this is not something that can't be talked about and changed, just as if it, any other way.
Joe, I have full confidence in what you just said.
So, no, I mean, every, this is a group, this is how we do it, and I have no problem either way, so we're gonna, we're gonna move it forward.
Uh, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
If we, if we do want to make changes, we would just amend what we passed tonight.
Right, you would get with Margaret, who initiated this, uh, who wrote this, see what, um, and then we can contact each other, or however you want to do it. Can't do any voting, obviously, but we can talk to each other. And if we, you come up with something a little different, you propose it to her and, and we talk about it, then maybe, and I say, you know, whatever it is, yeah, that sounds better than, or sounds good to me, then we can bring this back and change this.
Great, thank you.
It can't be changed. That's not what that means. I just meant the process, that we're doing it, we'll move this forward and moving, that's all.
Right.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, we don't have any discussion items tonight. Jamison?
Uh, okay, so the, um, planning, or the planning, uh, the recreation commission met last Thursday, um, discussed some Island Fest stuff, uh, which seems like super far away, but from a planning perspective, it's practically tomorrow. Um, there was some concern about getting the rides and equipment over the bridge, but, um, our valiant recreation chairman has been working with the, uh, the company that provides that, and, and it looks like we're going to be good to go. Um, one cool thing that REC started doing, I mentioned this, uh, I don't know, last month, um, started delivering baskets to new residents, which I think is super neat, you could really only do it like in a place like Groseal. And, uh, the people that, and Marissa is the one doing it, and the people she's run into when delivering the, the, uh, baskets have been extremely grateful about it and surprised, so it's, I think it's really cool. Uh, eight baskets went out in, um, December, so that's eight fresh residents, uh, eight more in January. And at this point, we now have twenty-seven businesses participating in it. It's not all Groseal businesses. Um, some of them are just across the bridge, um, but it's a really great program and, and I'm, I'm very excited about it. Uh, the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee did not meet in December or January. However, uh, we have been having some discussions about the Bellevue Connector. We recently signed our resolution for it and they're moving forward. They're having, there's some delays with the bidding process because that project, even though our section of it is the $2.2 million grant that runs from Meridian to East River and then up to the bridge, uh, it's a whole regional project. So in order to save funds and be good stewards of state and federal dollars, MDOT is the one handling all the bidding. It's a big project, it's a little bit complex, so, um, that's still moving forward. Uh, and we're starting to, we're starting to look at having discussions about gap filling. Um, we only have one gap in ours, which is about a hundred yards adjacent to the eighth hole of the Groseal Golf and Country Club. And I got to link up with them before we start having those discussions, because I know they want to, they want to participate in it. Um, and they've been, they've been good, uh, good residents in, in helping us out and getting the project done, so. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Kevin with treasurer's report?
This evening's treasurer's report, uh, for the month of January, Groseal Township had a total of sixteen million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and six dollars invested in various accounts. These accounts generated interest income of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars with an average interest rate of three point zero four percent. More details of this information is available online at thegroseal.com. Uh, treasurer's link. The treasurer's office, um, Groseal twenty twenty-four winter property taxes are due this Friday, February fourteenth, without penalty. If taxes are paid between February fifteenth and twenty-eighth, uh, February fifteenth to February twenty-eighth, two, twenty twenty-five, a three percent penalty will be added beginning March first, twenty twenty-five. Winter and summer delinquent taxes must be paid directly to Wayne County, the Wayne County Treasurer. Tax payment options include in-person at Township Hall from eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM. With cash, check, or credit card, a convenience fee will apply to credit card payments by mail, postmark dated, postmark date accepted, or placed in the drop box located in front of Township Hall. Online payments are available using online bill pay at groseal.com for credit card or electronic check payments, convenient fee, convenience fees will apply. Payment may, payment can also be made in person at the Groseal Ranch of Public Service Credit Union until February fourteenth only, cash or check only. We continue to collect late winter tax bill payments and late summer tax bill payments at Township Hall until February twenty-eighth. To date, we have posted approximately seventy-one percent of the total winter tax roll payments. Distributions of these tax collections have been sent timely to Wayne County and the Groseal School District. Twenty twenty-five pet licenses are available at the treasurer's office, the pet tag license fee is now twelve dollars for the remainder of twenty twenty-five. Be sure to provide proof of a rabie, a current rabie certificate for your pet when applying for these licenses. If the pet is new to, um, Groseal, I believe the fee is six dollars for the whole year, if it's a new animal to Groseal. And that is the treasurer's report.
Go ahead, sir. I said the Bellevue Connector was going to run from Meridian to East River, and it's actually Meridian to West River. I don't want the Bellevue residents east of Meridian to Tar and Featherme tonight, so I'm, I misspoke. It's, it's to West River, not East River.
I appreciate that, it'll save me the phone calls, no one else. Thank you, thank you. All right. Uh, trustees report, Margaret, you're first.
Um, I just want to ask residents who have any interest in the communication commission to please go to the township website and fill out that, uh, commission form. You don't need to check every box on experience. If you have expertise in any of those fields, doesn't need to be all of them, any of those fields, or are a strong communicator, please consider applying. Thank you, that was it.
All right, Mickey?
Um, I have a few. So, um, this last Wednesday, we interviewed three candidates for the position of fire chief. We got some good internal candidates that we interviewed, amazed with their extensive training and knowledge of not only our unique land geography, but water as well, um, as well as the surrounding fourteen downriver mutual aid cities. Um, in fact, the commission's continuing to train, and they hooked up with the high school on an ongoing basis, and three seniors go to the fire station an hour and a half every day to learn policies and protocols. And I think it was today, the students were tethered to the shore and went to the icy water to learn, um, protocols for ice rescues. The other thing is our fire commission, I was really impressed with the interviews, um, the people that we have in our commission and the ability to ask the right questions. We have Duncan Murdock, firefighter of forty years and chief for twenty-four years, Kurt Corniffel, fire commissioner for thirty years, Jerry Bringart, former volunteer firefighter of ten years, former Ford Motor Company general counsel, uh, chairperson Kurt Kobalak, former township supervisor, and of course, myself, uh, township trustee liaison and senior council at Miller Canfield. Um, Derek and, um, Chief Cam, Camilleri were there as well, and Chief asked some questions too. Um, so we're going to take our time to do our due diligence and expect to make a recommendation to the board at our next meeting. Chief has graciously, um, agreed to stay until we get a replacement. And in the meantime, he's still working, there's a hiring fire event on February fifteenth. And from noon to three, and if you're interested in becoming an EMT or firefighter, stop by and talk with the chief. Uh, next meeting is this week, Thursday, February thirteenth. Uh, I'll talk fast on all of these. Next one is open space. Check out Ferry Gage, uh, Trail, it's really easy to spot now that it has a gravel parking lot in front of it. Um, Meridian Woods, I feel really bad about this, but the makeshift bridge and cabin were dismantled. I feel really bad about that, but we got to leave the woods the way we find them. Uh, master plan, we have some questions about the master plan, we submitted them through James Brock. Ross came back and answered our questions. Uh, tree ordinance will be, um, actually, Groseal Nature and Land Conservancy is writing an article to talk about how you take a big tree down, you have to replace it. Um, we went over budgets, things like that. The other thing is that Dr. David Dimitri, that's coming out to look at Meridian Woods and the wetlands and how the water flows, will be there on February eleventh, so that's tomorrow. And they're meeting at nine-thirty at the Groseal Resource Center on McComb. Our next meeting is March fourth and last. Um, on the nature conservancy, they asked me to let people know, they will have maple shrugging class at Hickory Island Pavilion Saturday, March first, from one to two-thirty. And they are now taking applications for the Bruce Jones Memorial Scholarship for Groseal High School seniors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill, you are next.
I, uh, am liaison for the Airport Commerce Park and for Planning Commission. Planning is continuing its process of refining with its recommendation of the community. They're going to be making some decision on it, February nineteenth, I think it is. But then there's looking forward to some further process and, and, uh, uh, something more definitive, uh, late March, early April. The Airport Commerce Park people, uh, are sponsoring, as they have before, provided support of the, uh, the Rock Financial CF Rivers Half Marathon, that's for, uh, cystic fibrosis. There's various events that people can participate in. Uh, the event starts at eight AM on, uh, March ninth. And, uh, one of the places is a, a facility right here on the airport, they, they, they've regularly done that. And they've had great success with it. I'm going to leave it at that.
You set, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, Mark?
Yes, I'm the liaison for the zoning board. First, I want to thank the community for those who actually applied, I've been announcing it at every meeting so far, and we had five applicants to fill our three vacancies. We've been through three of the interviews, one was a no-show. We have two more to go, and we'll hopefully be announcing the placement of those folks at the next meeting. I have no, pretty, pretty confident we'll be able to do that. Uh, there was no meeting scheduled for the month of January, and we have nothing scheduled for the month of February at this point. However, what we will be doing with that time is going over some training issues. It'll be reviewed for some of the board members, it'll be new training for others. And we're going to hopefully start talking about some things, we're going to be tackling the, uh, maybe zoning changes that may be coming up with the new master plan, and other zoning issues that have changed across the state, so that's all I have at this point.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, township managers report?
Uh, good evening, I just have a few items, uh, for, for tonight. Just want to remind residents regarding, uh, snow removal. We are supposed to get a significant amount of snow, uh, Wednesday into Thursday of this week. Wayne County normally, um, plows primary roads, so this is your river roads, Meridian Parkway, um, Bellevue Church, the crossroads ferry, but they don't normally go into, uh, the residential neighborhoods. Um, so Groseal Township, through its DPS Commission and the DPS, uh, road maintenance budget, um, allocates annually some additional funding through the Road Maintenance Village, uh, for snow removal within the neighborhoods. But that's only triggered when we have what we term to be a snow emergency. So a snow emergency is when snowfall accumulation exceeds, uh, eight inches in depth. And the purpose of that is to ensure that our emergency vehicles can get into the neighborhoods, ambulances can provide service, fire trucks and police uh, vehicles can get in and provide, um, necessary life-saving services. So in the case that we do get eight inches of snow this week, um, between Wednesday and Thursday, um, I'll be communicating with the supervisor, the police and fire chiefs, um, and then we'll make that call i, if the equipment, uh, will go into the neighborhoods and remove the snow. Um, Groseal Township does not have snow removal equipment that's, um, necessary for that or practical for that. So we contract with a, a vendor through a, a bid contract at bid prices, uh, to provide those services. Um, so, uh, you would see heavy equipment in the neighborhoods, uh, like loaders and, um, road graders, that type of thing. Uh, if we do declare a snow emergency, we'll put out, um, a code red notification and we just ask that. and we just ask that residents remove all their vehicles from the roads. That makes sure that we can remove that snow effectively and efficiently. So, look for that on Wednesday or Thursday if we do end up getting in excess of eight inches of snow. Elsewhere in the DPS world, it's this time of the year for water main breaks. We had one, actually two today, and then one over the weekend. If there is a water main break near your home, you'll normally get a code red notification letting you know that there's an issue. Interruptions are usually resolved within two to three hours following the start of the repair. We don't normally send out a notification that the water main break has been repaired. You'll just notice that your water comes back on, and that's your notification. Normally, when we do have water main breaks, the, the water gets stirred up in the pipes, so you have a lot of rust and discolored water, so just run your water service until it clears up. That's something that you can do to avoid, you know, that discoloration lasting for a long period of time. We have a DPS meeting tomorrow, we're going to be reviewing budget priorities, contracts for roadwork, sludge hauling contracts. If you're interested, attend this room at 7:00 tomorrow evening. In addition, all of our Commissions and Departments should be having their packets on the portal now. DPS is no different, so if you wanted to review any of that packet information, the DPS packet is available on the portal for your review. Teresa wanted me to mention that the ClearGov budgeting software, the digital budget book, is near completion, so that is good news. As I had mentioned earlier, DPS is working on the budget, as is other, as are other department managers and departments. They're working on their 25-26 budget worksheets, and those are scheduled to be completed, I believe, by the end of next week or middle of next week or so. There should have been an email that went out that described the budgetary process. So, if you haven't received a copy of that, let us know, but we'll have specific dates laid out in there for public hearings, for study sessions, for meetings with department managers, so that, you know, everybody's involved in that budget process and is aware of what is being presented and proposed. And then last but not least, all bank wiring info was completed today for the receipt of the bonds for the bridge purchase. The closing on that is this week, and those funds should be dispersed to those accounts by Thursday. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. I have a few things that I'd like to go over in the Supervisor's Report. First off, we had a meeting last Wednesday in the boardroom here, was with all the business owners and actually some private citizens, that were going to have some construction projects at their home. It was well attended, and I hope it was very informative. We learned a lot also, we listened to what their concerns were, and I want to bring one thing up, that we will be revisiting the fees of commercial vehicles that are, I don't want to say overweight, but the more weighted commercial vehicles, if you will. We're definitely going to be revisiting the costs. I did obtain the schedules for the Mackinac Bridge and the bridges in Bay City, and we're going to take a look at that, I think we have to. I think, I don't want to get in too far into it why, or what the issues are, but I believe it definitely will be revisited, and that was brought up. And I thank all the people that came, they, they asked some very good questions, very thoughtful questions. And we're going to be moving forward with the program of getting not just the overweight vehicles over the bridge, but all the trucks and for the deliveries for, not just the commercial businesses we have out here, but for private citizens. Also, I wanted to say just one thing real quick. We talked about a forensic audit that we're going to have here. And Teresa, our individual in charge of finance, asked me, can we wait a few months? Because she's in the middle of an audit, finishing up, and also we're doing the budgeting. So, she has to be freed up for this, so we haven't forgot about this. I'm going to ask Derek to write up an RFP. Probably, I would say, would do it maybe the last one of March, the last meeting in March, because by that time, all of our budget will be set, we should be, obviously, we have to have it done, and it's going to go in March 31st as our, end of our budget year, so I have not forgot about that. I just adhered to her request, and she's got to be available for this, so that's where we're going with that. Also, Derek and I met with Riley Linting today, the State Rep, District 27. We went over a lot of issues, including the bridge, some other issues that refer to, I'm just going to say, a loss of revenue to the township. And she's going to look into some things for us, but she was very excited about getting in, she's very excited about working, and, and I know that she's going to have our best interests. Is there anything you'd like to add from that meeting, Derek, that was?
No, no, I just, I think, very appreciative of her availability to sit down with us and talk about, you know, things that are important to our residents. So, I think she's going to be a, a good advocate for our interests and, and do well for us up there in Lansing.
Thank you, yeah, I'm looking forward to some good things from her in assisting us, so that, that went very well. Also, I, real quick, also, they talked about the bridge commission that we're going to form. We just got some information from our attorney, and this is in the process, so we haven't forgot about this either. So, we'll be putting out some more information, and then we'll be asking anyone that would like to apply. We have an application for any commission here, to just fill one out, if, you know, you can actually do it. We'd take them now, wouldn't we? I mean, where do they come to? It would be not your office, it would be to Margie? Yeah, so, we would still take it, wouldn't we, Derek, if?
We never turn away applications, but until, I think, the board decides what the makeup of that looks like, we might not know exactly, you know, what the preference is for what we're looking for. But, you know, there's nothing wrong with turning in an application.
Okay, somebody asked me today, that's why, and I said, you can always turn in an application. We are just still in the process of creating this, so I wanted to make sure they understood that, that's all. So, that is it for my report for tonight, and is there any other, any, anybody out there? Anybody? Oh, come on up, sir.
Not least.
On tonight, Greg Carmsen, 21228 East River Road. I wanted to compliment the board on a couple actions tonight. First of all, on the FOIA approval, the FOIA portal. I think it's an excellent program, and as somebody that's actually used it quite a bit over the years through the Groseal Tax Bear Association, I'll say that it's, it's more user-friendly.
Think you're top on the list, to tell you the truth.
Could be. But, you know, the thing, the thing of it is, it's, it's not just a resource for the person that is asking for the request. It also, the documents stay out there on the Township's website, and it actually helps anyone else that's looking for similar information, they can search it, and they can find that information and not have to put in a request. So, in a sense, this could actually reduce the Township's workload, because why duplicate the effort? So, again, I think it was a good thing that you passed that, and it's a good program, very worthwhile. On the Communications Commission, glad to see the board moving forward on that. I think there were some good, good comments and, and questions that were raised, but, but I applaud Trustee Shelton and Clerk Jaeger for bringing this forward and, and moving it, moving it forward, because I think it is important to get it going. This is something that has been discussed for, for over four years, but certainly was the Tax Bear Association's priority, Groseal Tax Bear Association priority. And, you know, I know some of the new members of the board talked about during the campaign, and, and some maybe don't know all of the history behind it, but that, the Communications Commission, at one point, when it was operational, was, was very effective, I think, in, in formulating policy for the Township on communication and overseeing GitV and the programming, which, you know, at the time, it was, it was removed. We still had a local, I believe, it was, it was removed before, or right around the time that the Eel Camera went out of business, which, of course, you know, was our community newspaper, and we, we got a lot of information from that. But, you know, there was more, and irony of it is that in some respects, we, even though we got social media now, we had, we had information that was well organized in, in the Eel Camera, and, and it was in-depth, and, and with the GitV covering programming of community events and, and doing interviews on, on special topics, I think you had even to some extent more in-depth information by having those kind of communication tools. So, again, I applaud Trustee Shelton for, for moving this forward, and, you know, I think there's, obviously, you know, questions and modifications could be made about membership or type of skills you want to see on the, on the Communications Commission, but, but this is a topic that I, I think has, has been discussed in the community for, as being one of the real concerns about the lack of communication about what's going on in the Township. And as somebody that's run a, a popular Facebook page, the Groseal Civic Issues, now for, for years, I'd much prefer to repost information that's coming from the Township, from all kinds of formats, whether it's GitV or social media. You know, the more information that's out there from the Township itself, I think the better, because that is, 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 sometimes it's been said, that's the official information in the Township. Now, in the past, some of the official information in the Township hasn't always been correct, or, you know, perhaps needed a little more commentary from the community to flesh things out. But, but nonetheless, I think it's a good thing to see more communication and, and addressing one of the questions that came up about why the cell towers were in there. As I understand it, historically, the cell tower program did fund a lot of the communications program, GitV, and, and that's why having that Communications Commission overseeing the cell tower revenue made sense, because that was, that was being used for programming in, in the budget of the Communications Commission and Township Communications Program. And I think it does make sense to have, have a, a commission that oversees those funds and, and makes at least recommendations to the board. So, I, I would keep that in there, even though the board, in the previous meeting, put out a approval for retaining a new Township, Township Attorney that specializes in telecommunications. And I think that was, again, a really good step by this board to get a, an expert through a competitive process that hopefully can then advise the Communications Commission on recommendations, and maybe we'll be able to maximize, be assured that we can maximize that revenue. So, again, thank you.
Thank you, good information. Greg, thank you for all that.
Just real quick, I want to be clear, Margaret deserves all the credit for the Communication Commission effort. I only brought it, brought it forward because it came from the Clerk's Department, so. I just don't want to steal any of her thunder.
You're not.
Okay, we all said anything else from the board? If not, a motion to adjourn?
Approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?